We seat Pete before the roll call or after the roll call?
After.
All right, do the roll call then we'll seat Peter Waller.
Okay then. Good evening Commissioners. This is your roll call. Commissioner Waller.
We got to see him yet?
As he were.
We've seen him first or second, I don't know.
You still ask if he's here.
Oh.
And then you'll see him.
Okay.
Commissioner Whissin. Commissioner Shachtel.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Depp.
All right, let's entertain a motion to seat Mr. Waller.
So moved.
Second. All right, do we do a voice vote on that or do you take roll on that?
Take roll.
Okay, take a roll.
Commissioner Whissin.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Shachtel.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Okay, and we are looking to approve the minutes of, what was that, September 28th, I believe, something like that? So they have a motion regarding the minutes of September 28th, please, motion to accept.
I'll make that motion September 28th, 2021.
Moved, is there a second? Come on gang.
I'll second.
Thank you. They moved her second, any comments or additions, Carolyn?
I thought I had something, I forget what it was. But I'm pretty sure it was just a typo, so.
What?
I think it may have been a typo, so I won't make the fuss over it.
Okay. Mr. Waller?
Um.
Here you go.
Here's your puck, your puck.
Puck, talking puck.
Puck. On page three, I kind of read, it was under public comments. It said Dave Rippey does see an increase in traffic, it should be a not, does not.
Okay, correction there.
Anything else, Commissioner?
All right, we moved the second in, we've got one correction, let's take the votes to the group. Are there some who want to roll call this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shachtel.
Yes.
Commissioner Whissin.
I will say here, it's right now, vote.
I'm going to have to vote. All right, um, this is the time for comments from citizens appearing for items not on the agenda, and I don't see anybody. You're going to speak on the agenda, Steve?
No, I'm just here to listen.
Oh, wonderful way to spend the evening.
That is.
Okay, so no comments from the public, so we'll go on to our new item. Uh, first item is planning file 5821, location extent review for 202 Centennial Street. Watkins, thank you.
Commissioner Shachtel, should we?
Oh, are we?
Should we just see if, if there's anybody from?
Zoom?
Zoom.
Uh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How fast is this puck down?
Let me take it.
Anybody there?
There are people, but no tape.
Nobody, no, no hands raised for public comment? Okay, so on to 5821.
Good evening, everybody. We're trying to figure out right now if we have some applicants that we're expecting to.
From C-Dot?
Yes.
Audrey Trusick. Jean?
Um, the applicants that are on to do, could you do the hand raise function, please? Okay, we're trying to figure out who's here, who's not. Uh, my name's Watkins Holt Gray. Um, good to be with you all again, I'm, I'm a new planner here, um, and, and I need to share my screen.
Please.
Is that microphone on? It's a little hard to hear over here.
All right, we've got a C dot rep here.
All right. And let's just start this from the beginning. Okay, so the reason we're gathered here today is for a location and extent review for C dot, and I'll get more details on what a location and extent review is here in a minute. Um, but we're looking at an address, a parcel that's at 202 Centennial Street. And so, start you off with, here's a little context of where we are. Um, the, if you can see my cursor, uh, this parking lot is 202 Centennial Street, it's owned by C dot. Um, it's near the intersection of Centennial Street and Deveraux. I pulled this little shot from, from Google, um, and Google is incorrect here, Caverns Village is not where it shows it is, it's a little bit to the north. But so to the west of this parcel, we have an office building, to the south, we have Two Rivers Park, to the east, we have I-70 Rightofway, um, and also some kind of state offices and storage area. And then to the north, we eventually have Caverns Village, and we have the, um, the hot springs, Iron Man Hot Springs. Here's a context to look at the zoning, zoning of this parcel is M1, mixed use corridor. And I'll show you guys some pictures of the site. If you go any, any kind of typical weekday, this is probably what it looks like, C dot uses it for storage of all kinds of vehicles and equipment that are integral to their operations. That's actually an access way to Centennial Street. And a less nice one to Deveraux. Here looking to, toward the north-ish is Caverns Village. And so what is location and extent review? I know you guys have seen this before, but just to give a little bit of background, location and extent reviews are for governmental or quasi-governmental organizations. Um, they do us the courtesy of applying for these, these location extent reviews. Um, by state statute, they're exempt from many local regulations, uh, but they go through this so that we can kind of give them an idea of reasonable expectations for how they can develop, for what they can, what they can do with their, with their lot. And so in this case, at 202 Centennial, this is a C dot parcel again, um, and they would like to kind of standardize and clean up this parcel. Um, it was created outside of the, it was created through a series of deeds, um, the earliest which I found goes back to 1955. Um, but a survey deposit they reported back in 2006, um, that's what they've most recently given us. And so by cleaning this up, um, it will kind of create it as a legal parcel. And they've indicated that they're interested in transferring this, um, to Glenwood Tramway. So the criteria for location extent reviews, uh, there's only three of them here, and I'm going to read them to you. Application is consistent with applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies. Application is consistent with general purpose and intent of the municipal code. The application has minimized adverse impacts to health, safety, welfare of the inhabitants of the surrounding areas in the city. Uh, and so with that, I'm going to get into our findings, staff's findings with this. Um, there's not too many goals in our comprehensive plan that deals with something like this. Um, but we think that it helps in a way to promote sustainable economic diversity, um, because having a legal parcel where there's no question about where it came from and how it was created, that's good for business. You know, there's no, there's no questions about whether it's legal or not. Um, this is also part of an opportunity site that was identified in the comprehensive plan, an opportunity site that we envisioned potentially being used for a smart business park. And so nothing about this would prevent that from happening in the future, um, it might actually be beneficial to someone to develop it in that way. Uh, there's no actual development proposed with this. Um, any development that happens down the line will go through the typical procedures, um, before you or administrative review or whatever the case may be. So we think it meets all the code requirements, and we don't see, we don't expect any impacts to health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding areas. So, um, with that, if we, if we are able to talk to our, our applicants on Zoom, I know we have at least one representative from C dot. Aaron, I'm going to turn it over to you to see if you have any comments.
We going to ask questions of staff, anybody?
And also, our staff recommendation here is to prove it with the conditions that are on page three and four of your packet.
We have, uh, before we go to Aaron Lucero, anybody have questions of Watkins? I don't know if I can see these things, but, um, I don't know who's who. Go ahead, Amber.
I just have a quick question, I guess I'm not that smart, but what is a smart business park?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, smart business park, as I understand it, as we defined it, is, um, I don't know if I can define it really well, uh, but, but something connect, something using the I-70 infrastructure, how we have fiber over there, um, to, Jen, do you have any? Do you know what we were referring to specifically with a smart business park?
I, I don't necessarily know, I mean, it is something from the comprehensive plan from before, but I do know that we, um, had identified the area more, um, a, a couple of areas of town wanting to have kind of a diversity of businesses related, I think, to kind of diversifying, like, you know, away from.
Tourism.
Tourism and, and, um, I think the economic development piece of the comprehensive plan also speaks to, you know, wanting to have more other types of businesses, more healthcare, more financial institutions, some of those kinds of things. But I don't know that I have the, an exact answer of what the comprehensive plan is looking for related to a business park.
Commissioner Sipperly?
My question actually might better be addressed by, um, Aaron Lucero from C dot, who I, I hear we're going to speak to next, but it is regarding the C dot letter, and, um, they were having some concerns about the creation of an attached developable parcel. So I would just like to know a little more about that.
Yeah, and we can try to talk to Aaron, what, what my impression of their concerns are is just that it's, whether it's developable, um, how it was created, um, and, you know, if it's created, if, if someone besides C dot had created the parcel just with recording a deed, the way this had happened, um, you know, that's not quite, that doesn't fit with our process. So that's what this location extent review is seeking to do, is to kind of standardize it and clean it up.
Okay.
George, did you have a question?
Yes, um, could you go back to the, the site plan or whatever it is, the, the, um, well, you just passed it, you know?
Want to see, uh?
Yeah, on this, this image here. Okay, good. Okay, so, um, C dot is, is maintaining the, um, the operations that happened to the right of this parcel, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And how do they access that?
There, I believe, is an access easements, uh, coming from, if you can see my cursor, this is Centennial Street, and then there's an access easement, I believe, going to here.
Okay, but there is, I, I was trying to read these notes, I think it does say that they're removing some, um, permanent structures that are on this parcel, is that correct?
No, they're.
Is that what's in these squares?
There actually aren't any permanent structures on there.
Oh, okay.
I, I was, I saw that too, and I was wondering if there used to be before, because this was, this was, uh, drawn up, I think.
Okay, so right now it's just strictly a parking area, asphalt paved parking area. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? We get, um, Aaron on?
We're going to try.
For the applicant, and make any additional comments or questions?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, um, hello Commissioners, I, my name is Aaron Lucero, thank you for, um, taking the time to talk through this this evening, and I believe that, um, Patrice Campbell might also be on the call. Um, I think she might look like it says Josh Lapeley, um, or it might say Patrice, but I am, um, the C dot's program architect with our property management group out of Denver, and Patrice is the property management manager for the region, uh, Region Three, um, in the Rightofway group for, um, for C dot. And so, uh, she can probably talk through some, um, parcel questions if, if you have, but I just wanted to give a little bit of history. Um, I'm not an expert on, on state statute as it relates to, uh, the, the creation of parcels and the selling of excess property, but I did want to just kind of talk through how C dot typically, um, sells property. So we have, um, state statutes 38 and 43 that talk through, um, C dot's eminent domain authorities, um, the authorities by which C dot can acquire property, as well as authorities which C dot can sell excess property, um, be it Rightofway, um, remainder parcels, um, property to be used for future projects. And that, that statute really outlines the ability for, uh, C dot to carve off, as it were, pieces of property to then sell, um, as, as is needed, um, for exchange, um, when appropriate. And, uh, this is actually the first time that our property managers have ever run into this question in, um, you know, 15, 17 years that we've all been, uh, here with C dot, where there was a question of legality, and, and we did have some conversations about with, about this with our attorney general. And I think that the interesting thing that, that was brought up here was that, you know, while we have the authority to create and sell a property, or, or to create a parcel, it isn't really clear on how that parcel then fits into a local jurisdiction subdivision requirements. And I think that's why we're here, is how does this parcel that, that we have defined then work within the city of Glenwood Springs, um, subdivision requirements? And I think that's way, how we landed at, this might be the best and most appropriate way to get through that process so that, um, the appropriate plat's or documentation could be filed so that when we do sell this parcel, we could, um, make sure that the purchaser can, can develop as they wish, um, on that parcel without dealing with any, uh, complicated deeds or, or other things. So that's kind of how we ended up at this location. I did want to note that that parcel that is, um, being talked about to being, to be sold, is a parking lot, it does have an office building on it, um, and that office building is intended to stay, uh, as far as I'm aware, I don't, I couldn't really speak to what will happen to it after, you know, we do, um, sell that property. And, um, it has a, a trailer, kind of a semi-permanent office trailer parked on there as well, and that, those are the items that are there, and that will still be there, otherwise it's mostly a parking lot, and our, uh, maintenance operations are going to be on that northeast parcel with a driveway coming up, as Watkins mentioned, um, through that easement that has been defined, and then a gate into that, um, into that area. And that, that easement and that driveway is also going to a new office, um, housing building that just got constructed on Lot One, Block Two. So I think that's, in general, um, what I would like to present, and I would be happy to talk through any questions that you might have for C dot.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, any questions of Aaron, the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you, any more questions of staff?
Can you just tell us what the current zoning allows for, um, development in that area?
Yeah, it's zoned M1, um, so I'm not going to be able to give you the exhaustive list, you've got a chart.
Right, right, right.
But it, it allows a lot of different commercial uses, um, I believe some residential, um, it's meant to be a bit more auto, um, auto oriented than some of our other zone districts. By the way, thank you, Aaron, for that clarification, I was under the impression that those structures were on the other parcel, but that's, that's good for everyone to know.
Other questions?
For, well, is there anything we should even assert about legally in terms of?
What Aaron is bringing forth?
Uh, no, we determined the, sorry, uh, we determined this is an appropriate, um, route to, to review, uh, basically a subdivision, you know, the location and extent statute. Um, as Watkins kind of described, is, you know, it, it's more than a courtesy stop, uh, but it is, you know, there are appeal procedures, and at the end of the day, public entities, um, especially those with condemnation of authority have the ability to overrule, uh, overgo. In this case, you know, it was a bit of a, a weird procedure, um, as I said, as Aaron noted, they've been operating for this, this issue previously. Um, but, you know, once, once the plat is recorded and untitled, um, we feel, feel that this could be the best way to.
So related to that, we're in, the city's not in a, once this is done, the city's not in any position between the buyer and seller, there would be any liability?
Correct, we're just pervading it.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions of staff?
So, so then anything that happens in the future, I mean, has to come back through?
For development.
So this is, this is just conveying the land?
This is not even conveying the land at this point, um, it's just.
Just approving the plat.
Creating boundaries, um, that creates a conveyable parcel. Um, at, at that point, you know, assuming it's sold to a private entity, um, then they, you know, that entity would come back through, not under location extent, but under, under, uh, right development code.
I have a quick one, um, would be parking utility and roadway easement that's shown on the plat carry along, um, with the new owner, right?
Yes, I believe that would, um, after this, we'll be doing a, a final plat review, and so, um, we'll, we'll treat it like we do any other plat, surveying, compare it, record all the easements that are on it, along with book and page references, and, um, unless those easements are, are vacated, or were found that they're in error or something like that, then they'll stay.
But see, they already have a book and page, so I was just wondering, are they, do they stick, or are those negotiable? they stick, or are those negotiable?
It could be negotiable between the parties that, that own the easements, or that are a party to the easement, if I'm saying that correctly, it will remain.
Okay.
Yeah, assuming that's not, if the city, if the city's not a party to the easement, not anything.
Okay, I wasn't sure whose easement it was, sometimes those are, you know, city utilities, it does say utility, so.
Other questions from the commission? And no comments from the public? We'll bring it back to the commission for a motion. Somebody?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the fifty-eight dash twenty location extent review of the CDOT plat.
Your second?
My second.
Uh, findings and conditions on Page Three and Four.
Okay. We have a motion to approve with the findings and conditions and the staff report. Any comments from the commission? Seeing none, let's take, call the questions, please, Carl.
Planning File Fifty-eight Twenty-One, Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Commissioner Whising.
Yes.
Commissioner Shane.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitter.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Planning File Fifty-eight Twenty-One, thousand.
Thank you. We move on to Planning File Fifty-seven Twenty-One, various code amendments.
Uh, how come there's no attachments? Funny.
I think the first one is for Josh.
It's cer, it certainly is. So we have several items under this particular code amendment change. The first one up is going to be our Art Master Plan, and we welcome Josh Lapp, who is going to join us virtually. Josh, are you, are you ready to go?
I am, and I am here.
Fantastic, I'll hand it over.
Well, I, I hope you all can hear me, and I wish I was there in person like I was two weeks ago, and now I have a better idea of the room, since I'm, been virtual every other time. I'm just going to give a brief presentation, this is essentially the same presentation that I gave at council, so anyone who, you know, was at the council meeting, you'll, you're kind of seeing the same thing, but I want to make sure that everybody gets a sense of the Public Art Master Plan, and just, you know, kind of an overall view of it, and then we can go more in-depth with some of the other things. So our firm does this type of work all over the country, and we actually, you know, we focus on public art and cultural planning, but we also do other work like historic preservation, urban planning and design, and are, there's really just three of us, and the third one is a landscape architect. So, you know, he, he is kind of more in that urban design realm, and me and my business partner Amanda do most of the public art and cultural planning work. So we do this, like I said, we do this work all over the country, this is the first plan we've done in Colorado, but we have done pretty extensively, you know, really all over, all over the country. So the way we do this is, we bring our national experience and best practices from all these communities all over the country, and we really try to tailor things to each community. So while I'm bringing in the best practices that we've learned elsewhere, we're really working very, work very closely with staff to try to tailor the plan, and everything that we're doing is part of the plan, to Glenwood Springs in particular. So, you know, we know public art is really important for quality of life for residents, it really helps folks understand what the, the community's character is, while also, and really connecting people very closely with the community, but also helps with, you know, place-making opportunities, as well as economic vitality and development. So, you know, there's, there's kind of two sides to the public art equation, and one of those is economic development, you know, tourism, all of those kinds of things, but maybe more importantly is the quality of life that public art provides residents, and really creates those connections to the community, you know, that people really cherish. And everything we've seen over the past two years has really doubled down on the importance of, of public art in the cultural lives of, of our communities all around the country. So, why are, why have we done this Public Art Master Plan? We're really trying to set the direction for public art in Glenwood Springs, and, you know, we developed that vision with the, with the Arts and Culture Board, as well as city staff, and then we're really establishing policies and procedures, so, you know, a whole nother document, probably longer than the, the plan itself, is the appendix, and that really tells staff exactly how to operate the public art program, and really, you know, this whole plan is about formalizing the public art program. Then, it's also a guide to how to operationalize it, so how do we go beyond just the policies and actually make these things happen? And then there's some place-making concepts and public art concepts for implementation as well. So, really, the, the plan is broken down into these very specific sections that are all about establishing the program, so it's number one, where there's some recommendations around enhancing the role of the Arts and Culture Board, creating the Glenwood Springs Public Art Ordinance, you know, which is part of what you're looking at, implementing public art policies, which I just mentioned, those are kind of the things that live in the appendix, and then some funding for public art, and, you know, Jen can maybe give you more, if we have specific questions about this, we can talk about this a little bit more, but I'm just speaking to what the plan itself discusses. So, in terms of the additional powers and duties of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, this is really about, about their review of public art, about the recommendations that they're making to city council when we are acquiring new public art, and how they're to advise city staff on public art in particular, because a lot of what their current duties talk about the cultural aspect of it, so we're kind of being more specific about the public art aspects. And then, you know, city council, I believe, already adopted, I think that's what we did at the last meeting, we adopted a resolution that adopts the master plan, and then there will be, you know, these additional, the ordinance that we're talking about more after this, that is specifically around adopting the, you know, doing the things I just mentioned, as well as creating a public art acquisition account, defining the relationship between the public art program and the Arts and Culture Board, adopting the appendix, and then potential funding mechanisms as well. So just, very quickly, specifically with the policies, those are broken down into a variety of sections, which include the roles and responsibilities of all the bodies, you know, city council, Arts and Culture Advisory Board, or Arts and Culture Board, other things, how, how we should do a work plan yearly, how the funds can actually be used, so what could, what specifically can the funds be spent on, how we should acquire public art, manage it, in case donations are offered by certain groups, how do we manage that, so there's specific things around that, how the public art should be maintained, and then also some guidelines around murals. So, I'm going to let, you know, this was in the presentation, I think this is going to be talked about more later, so I'll let the rest of the folks address this, and I can answer questions around it as well. But in addition to the ordinances that we're proposing that would fund public art, there are other funding opportunities as well, including just general fund allocations, which can happen every year, grant funding, and then ongoing partnerships that the city's already doing, like with the DDA and other folks. So, i- in terms of operationalizing the program, there are some goals and strategies that we would like the city to follow, to help achieve the, you know, what the aims of the program are. The goals are really around connecting people to the identity of the community, celebrating the natural environment, which, you know, I can speak to even more now that I'm back home in flat Ohio, connecting to a culture of wellness and activity that exists in Glenwood Springs, building upon the history and the heritage and the cultural diversity in Glenwood Springs, bringing that sense of playfulness and whimsy into the community, as well as economic development, which is, is always a core goal of these types of things. And then some of the strategies, like I mentioned, continuing the partnership with DDA and downtown business owners, looking at applying for a Colorado creative district designation, doing natural public art out in the parks and the, the natural realm, investing in iconic public art in spaces that exist already, utilizing local artists, and doing more tourism promotions. So we also have some big ideas, and I'm just going to kind of briefly go over these, you can look at them in the plan, which I can give you a link to if, if you need, but really, these are fun opportunities, like doing a mural festival, doing public art around the bike trail, and looking at how some other places around the country have done that, doing some mountaintop public art, or other kind of public art that is interactive when folks are hiking, which is, you know, such a normal and fun activity, doing more bus stop public art, these are some photos from public art that was installed when the BRT line was initially built, and then doing public art with kids, poetry in the streets, creating a local artist database, doing some public art on the bridge, and so that's kind of an overview, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know there's a lot more discussion to be had, so I will pass it off, but I will be here to answer questions throughout.
Commissioners, questions of Josh or staff, or Jen, you, are you going to present something?
I, I am going to.
Starting the funding.
Go through a little bit, through the, the funding.
Yeah.
Yep. If you have any questions for Josh while I'm getting ready.
Yes, I'm happy to answer. I had the fun part, so.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Will you guys be overseeing the rollout of the program, or are you just helping us establish kind of the baseline for rolling out this?
Yeah, our, our role is really to, to give the city all the tools to do it themselves, and as much as I would like to, you know, spend more time in Glenwood Springs, I think that we are working really closely with city staff to empower city staff and the Arts and Culture Board to really operationalize this. So, you know, we'll be around to answer questions, and we're going to see this through until, you know, we're ready to move to the next steps, but, yep, after this, it's, you know, letting the butterfly unfurl, that is, the public art program.
Setting up the, the guidelines, yeah.
I've got a question too, so, so how do you determine the value for art, and you know, and I mean, it, you know, because it, when, when you look at the funding mechanism, you know, that whole thing of, you know, you're, you're a developer, and you've got to give X amount of money, but let's say you come forth with a piece of art, and you say it's worth ten thousand dollars, and the council says that, you know, the arts council or board says it's five, I mean, how does that, how do you work through those kind of?
That's a great question. So, the way that we do that, as it relates to the funding mechanism, is specifically around the, the amount that the, that the developer would be spending on the specific public art, so how much they're paying artists to develop the public art, so it's really based around the contract amount between the developer and the artist specifically. You know, obviously, long-term, the collection continues to be appraised, I think the city has had that done in the past relatively recently, and, you know, you, you continue to do that for insurance purposes, but as it relates to the ordinance itself, it's, you know, it's how much the contract is with the artist.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's interesting, because, you know, depending on where you're sitting, you want it to be high, or you want it to be low, so you get more art, or you, you know, anyway, that, that's kind of what my question's about, so, so I guess there's the, some sort of appraisal process, or some process that this is the city's process, this is what it is, and.
Maybe that's a good transition point to talk a little bit about the funding. Oh, I have to share my. So, good evening, commissioners, Jen in community development. So, most of the, what is drafted in this ordinance is related to Title O nine oh, which is not the title of the municipal code that the planning commission generally is looking after, but we thought that we wanted to bring this all together so that you could kind of see how it all fits together, because there is something that's being proposed that's related to an exaction on developers. So, as Josh mentioned, the ordinance would codify definitions related to art and artwork, artists, what the art, the art master plan is, construction costs, there's, there's a number of definitions that are included here, including what public art means, so a work of art that is visible and accessible to the public for a minimum of forty hours per week, and it includes sculpture, painting, installation, photography, video, works of light or sand, or any other project determined by the Arts and Culture Board to satisfy the intent of the chapter, and it would not allow for kind of that mass-produced art to qualify, so, you know, you can think of some, you know, kind of more mass-produced bronze statues kind of thing, or, or the art, you know, or it's artful, but it's, you know, like in Boulder, they have some, like, play sculptures that people can, I think they're like gorillas or something, you can buy them out of a catalog, so that, they may be artful, but they would not meet this definition of public art. Would have set up a public art acquisition account, and, you know, sets forward, sets forth the purpose, and, you know, how the program would function. So as it relates to the funding piece, it, this assumes that the public art would be funded in a couple of different ways. One, through a set aside of one percent of publicly funded capital improvement projects. So, for example, if we were to do the Twenty-Seven Street Bridge today, and this were in place, then some portion of that Twenty-Seven Street Bridge project would have included public art as part of the project, if this were to be adopted. So, that's one question that will be considered by city council.
Is that optional? You know, if we go to, if we have the Twenty-Seven Street Bridge, and we don't have enough money for the project with the public art included?
So, it would be part of the, it would be part of the design process, so, you know, the upcoming, say this is in, in place, there are some projects that are, you know, the design processes currently happening, for example, Sixth Street, so it will assume, if this goes into place, that when we design Sixth Street, that we are going to design an aspect of that project to include public art, and that there would probably be a, a call for art that's related to that. So, if you'll let me get through some of this, then maybe I can answer the questions. I, I think, anyway, it, it does not include regular road maintenance, or underground infrastructure, or utility projects, and we explicitly are proposing to exclude South Bridge, because it is already a very, very expensive project, and we, we wouldn't want this to be a barrier to complete South Bridge, so it is the one area where we have expressly said that we, so that, a little bit to your question, Commissioner West. So, the next piece of this is related to an exaction on private developers. So, as it's designed, or as it's kind of envisioned, or was part of this master plan project, the idea would be that projects that are subject to the open space requirements within seventy, forty, forty, would pay a public art, would, would have to do public art on site, or would have to pay a fee and lieu through one of the following means. And, so, as it's envisioned, it has this one percent of total construction cost, and that there, you know, that it would be reduced, discounted, if it was a Garthold County-based artist, and that the artwork would be located in an exterior place defined, you know, in, in the section, or that it be a cash and lieu. Or that it be a cash and loom, which would be a contribution of 8% of the 1%. Or a combination of those onsite artwork and a cash and loom. So after having had this conversation kind of globally about the public art plan, we had a conversation with the city attorney's office. And so there is a piece of, and I will let Richard speak for himself and the city attorney's office, but there's a piece of the way that we do impact fees that requires that there's a rational nexus. And we think that the 1% would be, we would need to do a study to get to that piece related to the rational nexus. And I don't know, Richard, if you wanna jump in here, or if you wanna let me continue on my way.
Well, I guess basically our concern with, you know, there's a lot of impact fees on development for various services that the city provides. Public art, in Colorado at least, there have not been a ton of these. There are a couple of examples. You know, no one has challenged them in court. They're relatively low fees. Some of them have been challenged. California actually has a couple of good cases where the the courts have said, the California Supreme Court has said that public art is, you know, is within the municipality's police powers to, you know, regulate aesthetics. So that's, you know, there's two parts of this. There has to be a legitimate government purpose, and then kind of a rational nexus to, between the fee and the governmental purpose. And 1%, if you, once you do the math, on construction costs, comes out to be pretty high. And in a normal case, in any other type of impact fee, we would, we would put an impact fee study, basically, to analyze that and to create the nexus. So that was kind of how we approached this. Talked it through with Jen and found some other examples of how you can generate funding on private development.
So I have a couple of examples here. One project that you guys should be looking at, that we give kind of a comparison. So I tried to do kind of some smaller ones and some bigger ones and got there in some creative ways. But so Building 3 of Solstice, which is last '95 and '96 in Cardiff Glen, I just did one of the three-story townhomes. And so the, if, you know, here are all the fees that they paid. The building fee, the plan review fee, the water improvement impact fee, the wastewater improvement impact fee, the use tax, fire, parkland, which was paid at the time of the PUD as a school land dedication, and then there was a credit. It doesn't matter exactly why, and so you don't need necessarily all the insider baseball, but at 1% of an art fee with no cap on their valuation would be almost $9,000. And so a couple of other big examples, Lost Phase 3. So it's a three-story apartment complex with 89 units. If you were to look at 1% on their overall valuation, it would have been $164,000 and change. Six Canyon, which is two buildings, 116 units, it would have been almost a quarter of a million dollars. So if you look at some of these other comparisons where parkland, school land, you know, those impact fees were put in place with, you know, an analysis that is tied to how much parkland per person, per acre, there's a formula for these. And the water and wastewater impact fees are tied to like those capital improvements and, you know, essentially a pro-rata share. So what we did is look at Wheat Ridge, which does 1% of their development fees. So that's their building fee, their plan review fee, and the use tax. And so that's that column where 1% of the development fees for Building 3 of Solstice would have been, you know, under $300. Phase 3 of Lost would have been, you know, just over $7,000. The Six Canyon building would have been $4,300 and change. And then Belvedere B for all six buildings would have been just under $4,000, if it were to be 1% of those development fees. So we think that that is something that's maybe a little bit more defensible and more in line with some of these other fees related to, you know, like the fire fee. Or the, you know, looking at the, at 1% with no cap on the construction cost, you know, it would eclipse the building fee and plan review fee together. So not that we don't think that public art is important, we absolutely do. But I think that, you know, we think that, you know, following a jurisdiction like Wheat Ridge that we have somebody to compare to. And so I will stop trying my screen. But, and then I will go back to a little bit more of what is in the 90. So it has, as Josh mentioned, procedures for acquisition and deaccession of work. And then the last piece is that we would need to put something in Title 70 where we have the rest of the exactions listed related to this piece. So this one is kind of stylized the way that we would for, that we did for the utilities for wastewater and water. So the bulk of what the legislation is, is in the section that's related to that. So 90 is for public lands. And then there's a piece in Title 70 that would, that would address that piece. So this is how we have it drafted today. New development subject to the open space requirements within Section 70, 40, 40 shall provide public art through onsite artwork, cash and loom, or a combination of that forth in Section 90, 80, 40C. So we're not asking for you to make a decision tonight. We just wanted to have the discussion. And there are a couple of items related to the code amendments tonight that where we just are bringing it to you for a discussion. And then Hannah does have a whole list of ones where we are actually asking for you to take action. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Commissioner, Commissioner Silverley?
Yeah. Which, what types of development are, do need to do the open space fees? Is that like all residential? If someone were to do an ADU or a duplex, does this apply or?
I would have to pull that up to get the list, but it is, it is not for everything. It's essentially, and there are some things that are in that 70, 40, 40 where we wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have that kind of development fee, so it wouldn't apply.
Even a garage could get to the $50,000 these days.
And I think, Richard, if I'm wrong, I think Wheat Ridge's up to their value at 100.
Yeah, but a lot of them start at 100,000.
We, you had a table, right, when you did with other examples of other?
I do. So if you will give me a second, let me pull up Carol's question. Sorry, I get distracted.
The common open space applies to PUDs, special use projects, major subdivision, minor subdivision, major site architectural and minor site.
A minor site architectural encompasses a lot.
So it would be, so it would be those, and it does exclude, excludes M2. Let me bring it up. And one of the items that Hannah is bringing tonight will add, depending on how you feel about it and city council feels about it, would add something else that would be subject to the.
So I have a question while you're bringing it up. So what's your process to figure out the Wheat Ridge approach or whatever? What's the next steps on that?
I think we wanna, you know, get your feedback and probably, you know, we took a survey of Colorado, but I think maybe look at some other states and, you know, figure out what is a good equation. Other examples in Colorado were square footage of building space, five cent per square foot, which it adds up, but it's not, it's nothing close to the 1% of cost, or just a flat per unit. So, you know, how much do you wanna scale it versus a flat?
I thought Jen's spreadsheet that you did for those examples was great, because you can really see where it plays in, and as you mentioned, fire, or, you know, it should not be in the same ballpark, I would think. You know, fire, some of those life safety kind of things, and big infrastructure things. So, I mean, for me, that would be a good way to see it as you come up with whatever your approach is. I don't know what other people think, but it kind of put it in perspective of here's where it ties in from a smaller project to a big project.
Who, Jen, who came up with the original 1% of development cost?
I think, I mean, there are jurisdictions nationally that have 1% on developers.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, there are a couple of examples, one's in California, obviously the one where it was tested in California.
Yeah, I would say we modeled the proposal off of a few communities that we've worked with in Florida in particular, who have the specific ordinance in place with the cap. So if you read the, if you, you know, look at what we were, what is actually in the plan, it includes the cap. But yeah, so we can, and, you know, we can give some of those examples as well, but that's where that came from in particular.
I wonder if it would make sense to kind of work backwards and say, what's a reasonable budget for public art, a number annually?
And how do we?
And then feed that backwards through cost, construction costs, or whatever you're basing it on. Square footage is like the 5% or whatever, and then, you know, come up with a number going in that direction.
And I think you certainly could do something like that. I think what, you know, what we, if the value is that we would like to have public art be part of these projects, public art is expensive to create. And so I think if, you know, we can use the example of the tubing, the Colorado. I think we, we did a process where we paid, you know, we had a set fee because we were doing it through an NEA grant that we had, so we had a number. But when we looked at what that would have cost for us to buy it if we hadn't gone through that process, it would be about $80,000, I think is what we had it valued at. So, you know, that's one marble sculpture. If we want that, if we wanna have these public art pieces, which I think, you know, we have this public art master plan, where we recognize that we wanna have this, we wanna have this be part of our community, that it is placemaking, it's economic development, it celebrates who we are, you know, as a community, kind of feeds into some of those things that is not small-town character, Commissioner Schacter, but is like who is Glenwood Springs. Those things are not inexpensive. So if you, if we, you know, have a very small value that's associated with these, you know, will we be able to have either the developer create the public art or will we be able to create the public art ourselves?
And will there be a process to transition old art out, I'm sure?
So, I mean, I think what, you know, kind of separately, as Josh is making some recommendations for some of the public art that we have that probably needs to be either, some of it maybe needs to be relocated so that it has, you know, is appropriate to the scale. I mean, there are a few pieces of art where they are lovely, but they are hidden where they are, and you can't really like get the full appreciation of them because they're way down here, and, you know, they probably should be more at eye level. And that there are some murals in particular that need some maintenance. So it does have a process for deaccessioning public art. I don't know that we've had a conversation about deaccessioning any public art, but I do think that there is art that is in the built environment that maybe wants to be someplace other than where it is.
I have some more. Well, first, where are you gonna cover? What is a minor site architectural plan? So we would know if it's a garage or an ADU would be?
So it does not include development of a single-family detached or duplex building on an existing lot. And so it would-
That doesn't mean it would be an ADU though.
It, but it's not, well, it would be if your change goes into effect for minor or for administrative site and architectural plan approval. It isn't specifically called out as an exemption. And maybe that's something that we should talk about as it relates to common open space. So we'll have it, hold that thought. We're gonna have some more conversation about that in a minute.
In the beginning of your presentation, you said a publicly funded project, and you used 27th Street as an example. But say if it's a C-DOT project, that is publicly funded. What if it's a federally funded project? Is that required to have art?
So the state has its own requirements for a 1%. So it is likely that that would be part of their project. You know, and that's, you know, a C-DOT project isn't necessarily coming through our process. So like, you know, the Grand Avenue Bridge project, for example, we certainly had input and we worked very collaboratively with C-DOT on that project, but it wasn't our project, and it was a state and federal project.
But it was publicly funded.
So it would be, publicly funded would be, I mean, we can add clarifying language. We mean us.
You mean city.
We mean us, yeah.
Yeah, because even as I was putting out federally funded things, I mean, it, yeah.
I think it's intended to be something that would be considered with art on project.
And, you know, sometimes we match a federal or state grant, and I think it's kind of, you know, it's far above the portion of the city funding.
So the 1% of the city's part and not the other funders of the project?
I think that's a conversation that city council will have, and not part of the the private exaction part that I think is really before you tonight, but certainly you're welcome to weigh in on it. But I think it, you know, I think that is a conversation the city council will get to have.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add on to like that question. So what would the example be if it was South Midland, that project, which I'm assuming is a city project, pretty good, pretty big project, so 1% of that, what, how much money would that have been that the city would have been?
I think the, the sticker price on that was 13.2 million. But whether or not that's the total number now, but I mean, I think as designed, it's 13.2 million.
But going by this, that would be 1% of that. Of that project.
Grant funding of that factory.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, we'll have to figure out how the grant funding figures into the question.
Because that project did have, you know, I won't get the numbers right, but, you know, approximately $7 million, a little bit north of 7, I think, 7 million from the Fed, 150 or so from the Department of Local Affairs, and then there was a county component to that project too. I just don't have it all memorized.
But just, one, one- One thing to add about the municipal percent for art, so the percent coming from those public projects, is that unless there's a specific nexus, so, you know, if it's a bond-funded project and the bond requires all the funds to be spent as part of that specific project, those funds could, can go into the acquisition account, and they could be used, you know, for any public art project. It just depends. I mean, obviously, it's at the discretion of, you know, city council and staff. So there's always the possibility that, you know, those funds could accrue and be spent on one specific project that the city, you know, specifically wants to work on. Again, you know, you use the Grand Avenue Bridge. I mean, that, that is the sort of large-scale project that the funds could have been accrued to spend on to specifically incorporate public art into that in some way. So there's, you know, there's lots of different things that, ways that that can be executed over time.
I have sort of an overarching concern. I am a fan of public art. However, this is art and cultural planning, and it seems as though we haven't seen a whole lot of it. and it seems as though we haven't seen a lot of the cultural aspects. I'm referring to like bringing in different people who live in our community, historical influences. This is definitely a plan for funding and placing arts objects. And I think we might be missing an opportunity to really bring in more cultural programs under the same umbrella. And I think maybe if we do go for this sort of funding, we make sure it's not all for the physical art, but we're also cultural planning, like the consultant here says he also does work on. So that is something that also deserves some funding and this would be a good way to get it. I am a bit shocked about the price for that tubing the Colorado without life jackets sculpture there. And that brings a concern, that means that we are going to police what art is. It's so subjective. You know, I think something will be art if it's a piece of rusted metal or the next guy won't. And then how does that get resolved? Because nobody's really wrong or right. And I wonder.
It's, it's not that we're necessarily policing the art itself, it's that we are defining what it means for the city to spend money on public art. So there, you know, obviously anyone can say whatever they want about what is art or what isn't. But ultimately, this is about creating a definition so that when the city is spending funds on public art, that it, we can, you know, we're answerable to the residents. And so we can say specifically like, this is the process, this is how we determined what public art is. And then also, you know, how we're acquiring it. So we didn't really go into that because we could spend a whole hour on that specifically, but there's a whole process for how we actually acquire the public art. And, you know, there, you know, how we balance the idea of having artistic freedom and having artistic excellence and, and supporting artists while also acquiring pieces that support the goals of the city. So, you know, there, the, the whole policy portion of the plan is very much about doing that and successfully doing that and helping the city, you know, nurture and grow art. Specifically on the cultural side of it, this was, you know, from the city's perspective, specifically about public art. So this was a public art master plan. This was not about the other cultural aspects of, of that, but that does not to say that the city is not doing that because the Parks and Rec Department does have a role in executing, you know, cultural arts and culture, not just public art, but this component of what the city was doing was specifically about public art, you know, for the reasons that we talked about.
And I will just say that, you know, we had a call for art that we did, it was a national call for art. There were folks from, representing lots of different entities, including the Historical Society, who were part of that selection committee for the artist. And then the art that, the tubing the art was commissioned for, for the city. So there, you know, that is sort of the process that would happen for, for other new art. There would be a call for art and there would be folks who would be reviewing that as a part of a committee. And it, you know, the thing about art is if it creates a visceral reaction, it probably is doing its job. So if you don't like it, it probably, that, that sounds like a good thing to me. You know, because, you know, there are lots of things that maybe people don't, don't love, like Lucifer. I don't actually know its real name. But, you know, there are, you know, there are things that are kind of, the blue bear, you know, in Denver. I think there are pieces of art that are iconic that people don't like. But that doesn't mean that it's not valuable or that it, or that it was not expensive because public art is often very expensive.
Right, so you were talking about just going through the city to go and acquire the art and here stood the criteria, but there also is an option that the developer themselves can provide the art.
But they would also be, so they would also be going through the same process, like for the acquiring piece?
But I want to make it myself and it meets all your standards, so can I?
So I think, Josh, I don't know if, like, I can give you the screen back if you want to bring that up, but it, the, there is a process that's identified in the master.
Yeah.
The, the plan itself about how that would happen. And it includes that piece that's in exaction. So if the developer wants to do it themselves, they're doing onsite art, they're still going through this process.
Yeah, so, and, and really what that looks like is that the developer is working with an artist. So we, just like, you know, they need to have a contract with an architect or a landscape architect, we ask that they have a contract with an artist as well. And, you know, the, the, the city would determine whether or not it meets, you know, the, the needs and the goals in terms of specifically like having that artist contract. But, you know, again, in the vein of it, art being somewhat open for interpretation, there are landscape architects that design site-specific public artwork and consider themselves public artists. So it's not that, that, that someone like that couldn't do this. But, you know, to specifically satisfy the requirement, they have to spend the money. So that means that they would need to contract with an artist. However, that artist defines themselves.
Are we saying then that you can't buy a piece of art that's already been created? You have to commission it through an artist and it has to be made after the decision? Because that doesn't seem quite right.
Um, no, we're not saying that, we would just need to see that they.
But Carbondale, please start.
Yeah, yeah, it's not that they always have to be commissioned, but, you know, that is the typical process just based on how the artists, based on how developers end up doing it because they often want something that is site-specific. But as long as they have that contract, I mean, either way, you're going to have a purchase agreement or a contract with the artist, even if you're buying a piece of work that already exists, which is totally feasible as part of this. And one thing I will just add as part of this, you know, in other communities that we've seen that have adopted an ordinance like this, where the developer would be spending their money potentially on the public art themselves rather than just paying the fee, we see a lot of developers really end up liking this and getting excited about it. And some of the, some of the cities that we've worked with, the developers have actually ended up spending a lot more money on the public art than they ever needed to because they see, end up seeing the benefit to it. And just, I mean, kind of as an aside, when I was in Glenwood Springs, I was staying at the, I can't remember the name of the hotel, but it's right across from the community center. And I noticed that they have a whole public art installation out in front of their, you know, development that I do not think was required. So, you know, it's certainly something that folks do even without the requirement. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner?
So, Carbondale seems to be really active in, in their public art. And I'm curious about the funding that they do.
1% of construction.
And 1% of construction. And I believe also, isn't it fluid there where a lot of their installations are temporary and revolving or somehow fluid?
So I don't know exactly how their, their process works, but I, in, I worked in Lafayette. Lafayette has a very similar program to the one that's in Carbondale, so I'll speak to that one because I know it a little bit better. So they have a certain number of pedestals or places where public art can go. They have a public art committee that's part of the, they have a cultural resources board. So it's kind of a subcommittee to that board and they do a call for art and they do get pieces from either that are commissioned for, you know, if they're selected or are pieces of art that are already on display or have already been created. And so they get them on loan for a year. They give the artist a stipend to, to be able to, and ensure them. So I think, I don't know what the, the number is off the top of my head, but there's a small kind of stipends that goes to the artist or honorarium kind of that goes to the artist for all of those pedestals, all of the places that they have for the public art is on display for a year. And then in their case, they do a, you know, best of show for the public art collection of that year. And then that art gets a prize that is monetary. And they have tried to have somebody purchase one of those pieces that's in the collection for that year. The, you know, the rotating art, either the city purchased that some other, they, they tried to have the exposure to the art result in at least one of those pieces being purchased and displayed somehow, some way. So there have been HOAs that have purchased public art as a result of that program. The city has purchased public art as part of the program, so then they have a more permanent collection. Naturally help. Lafayette has both this kind of temporary annual collection and then also a permanent collection.
Is there a component of that to be incorporated in the loans?
I, you know, I think that the, the cultural commission, they haven't, Earth and Culture Commission, they haven't necessarily had all of the conversations that, you know, this was just adopted by city council recently. So I think they will have lots of conversations in the future about how they're, how they intend to, you know, roll out the public art programs with a staff person, you know, that, that currently isn't necessarily on staff. And depending on what the funding stream is related to, you know, but if there, if some of these funding streams happen, then that may dictate some of the, the way in which the program happens.
Things like that give them some dynamacy to the whole thing, create energy for the whole art scene and the community itself.
And it was how our program, though it wasn't necessarily a city program, sort of started out, that it was kind of based on what Grand Junction does, very similar. So some of the pieces were, they were on display for a certain, I think it may have been a year. It was really with the, the Arts Council folks who, who did that in collaboration with the Chamber. And some of those pieces, for example, we have the piece that is in front of the fire station, downtown fire station, is, is not, it's not ours, it's not owned by the city. It is kind of on a very permanent loan as part of that program. It just never, the artist has never come to pick it up because I think he's interested in having it out, but it, but it isn't owned by the city.
Are we going to have to regulate the form and size and colors of public art? Say, I want to make some art and now I'm officially an artist and I want to have flashing lights in it. And, you know, signs aren't allowed to have flashing lights in your art. Can it exceed the 40 foot height limit without a variance from your art? Do you have free rein or is P and Z going to have to start regulating art?
I mean, I think that, that we will have some of those conversations as, and, you know, as they come up. But I would say that in general, that we're still going to require the, those, those pieces to adhere to the standards. And Hannah did point out to me that, that site and architectural plan review is not required for some of the uses. So does not, so accessory buildings are not required to, to go through that process. They wouldn't be subject to open space requirements.
Most of these exemptions, then Jen, for your average homeowner, there wouldn't be an art fee.
Right.
I'm figuring out how to make a sign out of art, so it's a nice big sign.
Well, then it would still be a sign, so we have that with murals, right? So people do.
Yes.
That, you know, we generally don't regulate that because it's a First Amendment issue, but we do ask to see it because, you know, somebody could have something that is a sign that is a mural, so.
Oh, and just to be clear, because my business partner is probably on a presentation right now in California, in a city we're working on this specifically, some cities do not allow murals at all. And some, some cities completely regulate every, you know, everything about it because they don't want to give the option for folks to even broach doing a mural or something like that. So, you know, that, yeah, I mean, we're not calling for any of that here and we're not looking, you know, that was not something that we wanted to pursue. But trust me, there are communities that do so and pretty aggressively, you know, for what, for good or for bad.
So Jen, our rule tonight is to listen and comment, is that?
So I think that if you have some feelings that are related to that exaction piece on developers, we, that is certainly within your purview. Again, we're not asking for you to make a decision tonight. And we will come back and it may be November, it may be December. But we, we wanted to give you the opportunity to, to have some discussion related to that piece, related to the exaction on, on private development.
May I ask a funding question again for clarification? Regardless of whether we do, however we come up with the formula, it sounded like 1% gross would be way too expensive, 1% of fees or some rational nexus, but help me understand the public art. Take, for example, the redevelopment of 6th Street. If it's a city project, then the city would have to build in, in its cost, the art portion, whatever, whatever rational.
So that piece would be what, I mean, that piece is looking at would be a 1%. And we can exact on ourselves 1% without a rational nexus. So it is, you know, that piece is, that is up for consideration by city council.
And there are, there are a lot of communities in the state that have that.
And. So I, and I have to say that I did not put this, I did not put this together. I think this was the city of Longtree that did this and I just have, there's a listserv and I happened to see that, that it was pulled together. But, you know, you'll see that on the funding source, like several of these have 1% or 2% on capital investment projects.
So there's, there's two schedules then, one for private and one for public development.
Right, so that, 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 you know, I think that's what we're talking about. And city council has not had that discussion yet and they, when they did the adoption of the plan itself, there was, you know, we're going to have this discussion at a later date related to the funding piece.
Then staff would present the affordability issues to council in terms of if you, if you impose a 1% on total cost for a public project, yes, the city generally can afford that? Is that part of staff's role?
Well, I think we're going to have a conversation about it internally, you know, with the engineers and, and folks. But we are, we are in the process of considering how that will happen. I mean, it is a goal of the city to have this public art. So, you know, we have, we have lots of competing goals and I think one of them is related to this economic development, placemaking.
Other, other questions or comments for staff?
Anytime. I just, I think it's really admirable that we're taking this up. I think that just establishing guidelines really streamlines the process and is going to help the city look cohesive moving forward. I feel like, and this has nothing to do with, I mean, this is just a personal opinion, that Glenwood guy that got put up at some point just seemed so willy-nilly with other art projects that have been implemented. And it just seems like creating a standard is a really good thing. And also dedicating money toward the, you know, I think personally I look at Carbondale as very quintessential of what I would love to see in Glenwood. And so the fact that they already have this in place sets them up as exemplary. And I think following suit in some way makes sense to move forward. And, and so it sounds like we could do the 1% with a cap as well, right? That could be an option. Looks like some of the other municipalities have done that.
So I think the only, so, yes, I think that there could be a cap on the, the public piece as well. I think the Lafayette is not in this list, I don't think, but both Westminster.
Crested Butte.
Are the ones that have this piece that's related to private development, it looks like. And then, Richard, what did you say that Lafayette's like?
Lafayette's is 5 cents per square foot of built. And I don't believe there is a cap, but I, I think I've seen caps of like $1,000.
Yeah, it looked like Crested Butte had a cap in there too. Yeah, it looked like Crested Butte had a cap in there too, maybe, I don't know. Anyways, um, and then the only other comment I would make is that Arts and Culture Council is all of a sudden gonna be very important. And I might switch, I, I might switch commission.
Hannah says no, thank you.
My mask is getting stuck.
It's just the amount of funding and I could get behind one percent of some of the development fees, but I think one percent of the total cost, uh, it's gonna really be in the position. Uh, and just in terms of prioritizing what we need here in the city, that almost five to ten million like home construction.
You know, like a hundred and seventy-five, if you, if you did it right, that would be a house for someone. And I think, uh, the fire department needs the funding, you know, the affordable housing needs the funding. I think we should move ahead with supporting the arts, but, um, I, I think starting with the one percent of the development fees is a more feasible, uh, number to begin with.
And do you have a feeling, and some of the conversation was that maybe that fifty thousand was too low a threshold of that it should be for projects that, I mean, I think that you mostly are gonna get above that anyway because of the types of projects that would be subject to the open space requirement. Did you want to weigh in on that related to the construction cost?
Would exempt it a lot of things.
Right, with the, with the exemptions, and I would like to probably look at those a little more closely. If it doesn't affect a single family or duplex or an accessory building, then those guys already don't have to deal with it, which is more in that fifty to a hundred range, but I'd be all right with setting it at a, at a hundred, like some of these other municipalities do.
I think a question you ask is, would Six Canyons still build a project if they had a one percent fee?
Say that again.
Would Six Canyons still build a project if they had a one percent fee? I mean, if you want art here and these people are building these huge projects and.
One percent of gross?
Or one percent of the construction, so not gross, but, yeah, but you take out your fees.
Right.
And, um, I also thought architects, architects weren't on there, which to me, but the fee just like engineers, I think, really.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like a side small comment, but, but the architects and those large projects are not cheap at all.
And I think what, what we would do is probably, you know, what's the construction cost that they give us at the building permit is what we would base it on. And that's how I calculated it.
That was, yeah.
Materials.
Materials.
And they go all on that because they're, because they're used to be something, not, not that.
And I did this quickly, so.
Have any, have any of the communities you looked at?
I know it's not politically always the best thing, looked at an actual mill levy to, um, on property tax for, for art? If it's that important to the community and that's a more steady source of funding, have any of the communities taxed themselves that way?
Have to go back to that list and look.
I know, I mean, on the front range, there's the, uh, the SCFD.
Right.
The what?
At the cultural facilities districts, so they, those districts, I think, within municipalities can, um, raise their taxes basically to, to support all this arts and culture.
By a vote?
So any, any mill levying tax adopted is by vote.
But no community that you know of has done a general, a, a general obligation tax designated to the arts for their own community?
And I, I mean, I didn't have an exhaustive list, like the, this, like, this list, again, is not something I put together. There is one on this list that has a lodging tax, it looks like, that goes to, goes to public art.
Yeah, we're putting, putting a burden on, on, on part of our community that's already, we're already struggling to get more out of that in terms of, of low income housing. You know, to your point, I think we're, we're hitting against, um, the development industry where the development industry is already pushing back and saying, you know, we're, we're, we can't provide housing for people in low income. We're creating another burden in that area.
Well, and I'm, I'm related to that.
As opposed to what you're suggesting, uh, you know.
Well, and also I'm concerned, related to that line, that even though it's not at the, this is in line ahead of time, but if we're ever gonna have a dedicated source for housing, now we're going head to head with art.
That's what I'm saying.
And I agree, so maybe one or the other ought to look for something like a, a small mill levy to do it or something. I don't know, but, I mean, yes, in commercial pays way more than you and I do, but still, it's a different source, it's a steady source, and it may not compete head to head with somebody who's doing a project. I don't know, I don't know the answer, I'm just asking the question.
Me too, me too.
I like what George kind of said, you know, if you begin with the end of mind a little bit, I mean, you wanna raise.
How much do you want?
Yeah, two hundred thousand a year or three hundred, you know, I mean, I don't know what this number is, but I think that's a, that's a good thing to kind of put in there. Maybe try to back into it a little bit, but it needs to be based on logic, so it's not maybe that way, but maybe that kind of helps a little bit. I think looking at how it plays for developer to all the fees of the different things that we talked about, I think that's good. And I like what you said about, um, adding the pedestals and, you know, we know several artists that, that would maybe, you know, put something up there for a year and then, you know, you know, at the year someone likes it, it's a chance for them to maybe sell for, sell their products, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it, it seems like, I mean, it's a great program and I think we all think it's a wonderful thing. I agree, Carbondale would be a wonderful place to be like, but how do you do it and balance it with all of those things? Sounds like there's many ways to kind of look at it, which is what you're just getting started on. I mean, is that, is that correct, is you're kind of just feeling designing that?
Well, I would say that, you know, I think public art, um, that, you know, the cultural, I'm, I'm touching their name every time. The Arts and Culture Board, they, you know, had this idea that they, when we did this project that was partially funded by the NEA, that they wanted to just kind of move the needle, they wanted to do that. But that is the reason that we started this, um, Public Art Master Plan. So I think what you're saying is right, that there, that they have lots of work that they would like to accomplish, um, related to, um, seeing more public art and the art that we have maintained to different standards.
Moving it around mostly keeps it fresh and then you notice things that you didn't notice before and then it, it doesn't cost as much as, um, creating new art. So that, I'd like to see that as part of the program.
I also, and maybe this is because I'm new, but it doesn't seem like developers are having a hard time coming in and getting excited around developing here. Like it's not prohibitive, we have seen so many applications for large multifamily units. And I know we want more of that to go to affordable housing, which is now built into the code. So it seems to me that now we are, we know the one percent is gonna be too much, but throwing a little bit towards the arts doesn't seem, um, insurmountable.
Thank you. Other, other comments or questions before we go on to the next item?
The five percent per square foot is, uh, that just kind of dissolves, you know, you're a developer, we didn't even say that. Five cents a square foot.
And I didn't do that calculation, we certainly can if it's, um, of interest.
How many square feet of, um, new residential have we approved in the last year? See, if it's almost a thousand units, um.
Quite a bit, a million square feet.
Yeah.
Well, anything else for staff? You need any answers from us?
We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thanks so much.
Thanks, Josh. We have code amendments now.
Fun continues.
We'd like to break.
Quick break, just to go to the restroom.
Hannah, we'll take a five minute break. Seven forty-five, right? Seven forty-five on our computer clock, seven forty, seven forty-two on the other clock. More fees for developers, Pete. Got it, rack 'em up. Rack 'em up, baby.
So would, would this be part of the conflict? Yeah, it would be, wouldn't it?
And we're back in session, Hannah.
I didn't know that was an option.
It's not unless you have seniority.
She's got seniority.
Are we back?
We're back.
All right, so a continuation of planning item fifty-seven dash twenty-one, which had several components for code amendments two seventy. So the next section that I'm going to talk about, this is an action item that staff is recommending approval for your guys' review. And then I'll have the final one, which is non-residential design standards, which is similar to what Jen just presented. We're bringing it to you to review, but it is not a final action item at this point. And I'll explain that a little bit more when I get there. So this is consideration of various code text amendments to Title Seventy with some sections included there. Review authority for actions involving amendments to land use code, Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommending body. So after your action tonight, either way, it will go to city council for final approval. So this is an extension, this is what Gretchen Reisell used to do. Oh, and I'm supposed to get used to saying Hannah Klausman, Community Development. So this is what Gretchen Reisell, formerly of Community Development, did a lot of, and this is a continuation of those efforts. We adopted a completely brand-new development code, which most of you were a big part of in twenty-eighteen. And as we have gone about implementation of that code, we continue to find small areas that need edits, changes, clarifications on intent, and some modifications as we actually apply it to real-world development applications. So that is what I'm going to propose to you and what was included in the lovely spreadsheet by code section. I do have all of the full code sections for each of those, so if we need to review it in a little bit more depth, I'm happy to pull that up for you guys. So let's dive right in. And this is small on your screen, but you've got it in your staff report as well on pages three through seven. The first one is section seventy thirty twenty, this is our table of allowed uses. Staff did notice that we have a column for use-specific standards. Things in this column include like accessory dwelling units, other things that have additional requirements. And under storage of hazardous liquids and gases, there was not a corresponding code link to those additional standards. So this is literally just adding that link to show anyone through this development code that there are standards for the storage of those materials. And if you guys want to talk specifically, have questions about one as I'm going through, happy to entertain those as we're working down. So I'll pause.
But if you worked asking the commission if they had any, maybe there are no questions, having reviewed these, maybe we can. Does the commission have questions on?
It's all read through it?
About these, you've read them. I don't want to cut you off, but.
You guys want to make it shorter? I think a lot of these are those general like edits. I would call your attention maybe to just a few, if you don't mind, that I think you might have some comments on. There's a code change that does have impacts. Some of these that are clearly just edits, we'll move through. The next one, just a general edit, it's allowed, it's regulated in a different section of the code, so we didn't find it necessary. Our common open space, since we just discussed this and Jen pointed out, we are adding administrative site and architectural plan review approval to the applicability because site and admin plans now encompass three to eight units. So basically, when you read the code, an eight-unit multifamily development was not required to provide common open space. So we are fixing that here because we do believe that that development should meet that standard. So the exemptions, accessory buildings, which we just noted, so not a garage, not an A D U, single-family homes, no, duplexes, no. This, the common open space requirement would literally be tripped by three units and above, and we're just making sure that that's captured here. I'm seeing head nods, we'll move along. Showed up a little odd. We have a repeal, we have a duplication for workforce housing. I doubt that you guys have questions on that because it literally is a duplication. We forgot to tell our code writers to delete the last one because we moved it into a new section. So no changes there other than deleting the duplication. This one, so development permits, seventy sixty fifty A two. Currently, code does not provide a mechanism for our wonderful director to refer off-street parking alternative requests to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have that in code on other items. She's able to refer, as you all know, if a particular project is contentious or has neighborhood pushback, our director can push that application up so that you guys are the deciding authority on it. But we don't currently have that option for our parking alternative requests. And I think you guys are aware parking is a hot topic, and sometimes we get requests that our director might feel be better decided by you. So this is allowing that to happen, not saying that it always will. But at least it's an opportunity for Jen to say, I think this needs to be decided by.
Share the burden.
Broader board. So that is that small edit there, adding that. We also, this minor subdivision applicability, currently we're operating under code that requires, I guess an example would be the final plat that you saw tonight, which came under a location and extent because it was a jurisdiction. If that was not a jurisdiction, that would have had to go to you and then to city council for approval for a plat review that staff can review pretty easily and make the necessary corrections. So this is allowing us to do that for a smaller project. So subdivisions less than three, creating three or fewer lots or ten or fewer condominium units. Right now, as it's stipulated, if your lot is meets and bounds, if it has not been previously approved final plat or preliminary plat, it has to go through a lot of public hearings to get approval. And staff does have expertise in putting this through. So we've made an alteration there that we feel is beneficial for the applicants, also beneficial for staff time and your time because that's really more in our wheelhouse. Seeing nods, no questions there? I think we might be. Question?
Maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but I thought it was addressing a defined property through meets and bounds. And I'm wondering, the new number one subdivision is creating three or fewer lots within a single plat. Should the term plat be used in that line?
That is a good point, subdivision creating three or fewer lots or ten or fewer condominium units within a single plat.
Parcel or maybe?
It's still a condominium plat.
Because we are creating a plat at the end of the process, it'll just be with staff, so.
Initially.
It's kind of like a condominium plat that creates airspace.
Okay, so.
I think that's okay, but that's.
I thought I was trying to get rid of the term plat and then it comes back in again.
Well, not getting rid of the term plat, but getting rid of the necessity that you've had to have a previously approved final plat. But what we are creating in this process is a plat, and they would submit a plat to us for approval. So I think that can stay.
Thank you, George.
All right, thank you.
There's sidebar happening, just allowing for additional comments if necessary.
They're discussing the world's share.
Flexibility and relief procedures, this is also just a minor tweak to how it can be applied for. Currently, if you're submitting for only a building permit application, say you're building a deck, as written, you can't actually access the administrative adjustment process because it says that it has to be submitted concurrently with a development permit. But staff believes the intent, administrative adjustment, you can have a setback adjusted by fifteen percent. So we do actually believe that that should be accessible to any project that needs that setback. So we have adjusted that to not be a required concurrent. It can be concurrent if there is a attached development permit application, but this can also be submitted with a building permit application or any other.
I had to look up what the D R C was because you guys never talked about that.
Development Review Committee.
Is it? All you all?
Mysterious group. It's all of our departments that weigh in on developments and do review. So engineering, public works, fire, police.
Legal.
Legal, part of that. We meet regularly, it's a membership card.
I've never heard of it.
Staff that reviews all applications. Okay, and the next one, that's an excellent question. This is a very small tweak. It looks like in the summary of development review procedures for the administrative and architectural plan review, everything apparently was shifted over by two incorrect columns. We're fixing that. And then we added a definition for focal point area for non-residential and mixed use. And these are the ones that are calling for your decision. Staff recommends approval with the suggested findings and conditions on page one and two of the staff report and also included here. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and other city policies, does not conflict with other provisions of this code. It's actually making it better in that sense. Are necessary to address a demonstrated community need, necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and/or policy, and is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions. Maybe someone just wants to move to motion.
Questions to staff? I don't see any, so let's bring it back in here for a motion. No, there's no public comment, I assume on Zoom either. I would be shocked.
There's not a number on the report, there's not a.
Planning item number?
Right.
Oh, that would be planning item fifty-seven dash twenty-one.
Fifty-seven twenty-one, looking for a motion on the recommended findings. Or the recommendations and findings.
Approve fifty-seven twenty-one code section amendments. Title zero seven oh is listed on page three through seven, with the findings listed on page two.
One and two.
No, it's not the wrong thing.
Oh, second, okay, good. We got a motion in a second? Any other comments? Let's call, no. Call the question, please, Carlos.
We're planning file fifty-seven twenty-one, Commissioner Sibley.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaker.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yeah.
Commissioner West.
Yeah.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Whissing.
Absent.
Excellent.
Planning file fifty-seven twenty-one passes six to.
Zero.
Zero, okay, six to zero, in absence of Commissioner Whissing.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you there, Carlos. So our next item is also discussing code changes, but we're not asking you to vote on it at this time. But we do want to pass it by you for review and discussion so that we can prepare it for proper public notification. So this is the non-residential development standards in the downtown core. We recently had a work session on this with you guys, which is what these recommendations are coming out of. Again, review authority, once you guys do see this as an action item, it would then continue on city council for final approval. So the amendments include regulations, as discussed in our work session, for location of parking lots and standards for percentage of tax generating retail uses on the ground floor. So I detail these two items in your staff report. Let me make this bigger. So the first one, parking lot design and location. Staff has included language for surface parking configuration and location to orient a hundred percent of off-street surface parking behind the rear wall of the primary building within the downtown core.
So I just have a question on that, I know that's what you're talking about. If I took the Bank of Colorado as an example, I think they were within the overlay. Let's say they are, maybe they're not, but so when they redid their building, I'm assuming they did, I'll base it over fifty percent because they kind of redid one. Would that mean that they would need to move their parking? You know, that's between them and Vaudeville, that they couldn't have it there, that they would, that they couldn't have it on Grant?
That is the direction that we got from your discussion, that we did not want to have parking lots pulled up right to Grant and would prefer them to be tucked behind. I do want to make a distinction on this one. It is not specifically related to the overlay zone that I will touch on in just a moment. It can be if that is what you desire, but in the section as written, it would be more applicable to downtown core. So if that needs to change location-wise, if that's something you want to discuss tonight. I will certainly, you were just giving me all the compliments tonight, and I'm here for it. Downtown boundaries with, you know, in creating this map, I don't think I've ever added all of them at the same time. But I did want to give you an idea so that we didn't assign this regulation to an area that you weren't very intentional about. So the green, the largest one is the downtown design standard boundary. The orange is the G I D. And then city downtown core is the beige.
Bring it down, yeah.
I don't see beige. Oh, the whole thing. Oh, okay.
All right, that's actually the largest one. Did you know that the city downtown core included that much space?
It's for the cemetery.
And then the proposed overlay boundary, we kind of discussed this on staff, and it's something for you guys to consider. We brought this in a little tighter, and it really only goes basically a parcel deep off of Grant. So Commissioner Waller, you had a question in regards to the parking as it relates to this map?
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, my question was really like the Bank of Colorado on that one. Sorry, thanks. But that parking lot, I mean, if they came in now for that project, they would have to redo their project. I'm just trying to understand.
Right, if they came in with that project today, we would say it doesn't meet the standard for parking lot configuration, and you would need to rework it so that that parking occurs behind your building.
And they would have to do that, I mean, even though they had a parking lot there before, you're not grandfathered in, and what I kind of read was if you touch over fifty percent of your building or whatever, then that's a, it's a new project.
Right, our threshold standards for development would a lot of things kick in. It's not just, it's not if the bank came in and was adding, you know, a small addition. You know, we wouldn't say like, you got to expand your building or get the parking out of here. So there are thresholds for when it would apply.
Is there a reason that overlay district doesn't extend over to Sixth Street?
To Sixth Street? So let's talk about the overlay district because the parking is one configuration that's larger.
But also the non-written, the.
In the overlay district, we started with the idea that this would be a deed restriction on the actual building. And that has complications and a lot of work for staff. So in looking at how these standards are applied, staff did feel it was best to create an overlay district, which, if you're not familiar with overlay zoning, it's a regulatory tool that creates a special zoning district placed over an existing base zone. So it's in connection with, which identifies special provisions in addition to those in the underlying base zone. So staff, I took a stab at naming this, we can change it if you hate it, you know, the business district overlay zone, pretty common naming for this type of thing. And so the overlay zone is specific only to that ground floor retail provision that you guys talked about, which would be triggered with the demolition and rebuild or the fifty percent threshold. And I have, let's just look at the actual. So the use regulations, non-residential buildings on a vacant lot, minimum of fifty percent of the gross floor area on the first floor shall be uses that generate sales and/or lodging revenues for the city. So that's when a lot is vacant and being developed. Demolition, when a non-residential building is being demolished, the first floor of the new building shall be same as the last one. Uses that generate sales and/or lodging revenues for the city. And that actually needs to be changed to fifty percent.
It's not a hundred percent.
That was not what was discussed, it looks like I left that off in my definition. As you, for both vacant lot and demolition scenarios, fifty percent of the ground floor needs to be tax generating.
But if it's being developed for residential, it doesn't matter?
As written.
As written.
Good point, Joy.
So again, back to question, is there a reason why that overlay, same overlay district wouldn't be applied over on Sixth Street where there's a lot of potential redevelopment?
Yes, and this is a good question and kind of, we went back and forth on what this actually looks like. Where did I go with that? If you think it needs to be extended on that, we had considerations of what happens if we apply it to that side? Is it going to be overly burdensome? Is this the area that you're really concerned about, being the pedestrian-oriented, you know, service area that you guys were talking about in the discussion? Is that Sixth Street for you as well? You're concerned that, you know, a certain type of development is going to take over that area? I mean, that was the concern that brought this up. When staff was constructing this, and we're not tied to this, it is a discussion for you guys. This is the area that we felt you were targeting the most in your verbiage. You know, we used downtown core, on Grand Avenue was also mentioned, so we pulled it in tight to this section of Grand Avenue. That's what we felt was most appropriate? That doesn't mean that.
I don't want to speak for the rest of Commissioner or Commissioner Dame. However, were he here, and I would, he would probably advocate for Cooper being included as well. But I definitely think, given what we've talked about, the future of downtown pedestrian and Sixth Street, I would advocate for Sixth Street being included, at least from Fran to the Roundabout area, at the very least.
I'm on board with that.
From the bridge to, yeah, from the bridge to the Roundabout.
I think also, you know, in our discussions, there's a lot of articles that you can read on requiring ground floor retail. Rabbit hole, if you want to join me some evening. Because that's where I was. And so I think it was a little bit more of a cautious approach. Because we, this is a little unknown how it's going to roll out. So I think that was kind of staff's intention here, a little bit more cautious than expanding it full.
What about going up Seventh? I mean, I can agree with Cooper as well. I mean, to me, it seems like you go up Seventh, Blake. I mean, you do like a little L there, and then I could even see that you're filling the Cooper part up.
Down to Colorado.
I mean, well, Colorado is kind of more interesting, given it's got a.
Right.
But we don't want them having parking lots either.
Also, I think one of the considerations, and Jen might have been reaching, this might be, so when we were actually like looking kind of block by block, like, how would this look? One example is a parking lot, a municipal parking lot that's off of Colorado Avenue. For this one, if we built a parking structure there, the bottom floor of the parking structure is going to have to be ground floor retail, fifty percent. It's going to definitely change the, you know, the scope of that project. So those are the types of things you need to consider as you're expanding this or contracting this. Like, apply it in your mind. Because this has real-world impact, and I. Because this has real-world impact, and I, and I want, not saying that you don't, but I, I want thorough consideration.
Let's say, let's say, whether it be Sixth Street, or Cooper, or Colorado, and you are being somewhat conservative, you're saying 50%, not 100%. But let's say, for example, remind us, take the parking structure, let's say this for an in case, and parking structure, multi-story parking structure, we're going to be built there at the corner of Seventh and, and Colorado, and it was a very desirable thing. What's the variance or appeal process, so that it doesn't have to be 50% retail?
That would be a variance in the code, but I see Jen reaching for the button.
Well, I think if we were building it ourselves, we could go for a location extent. I can imagine the look on your faces when we proposed it. I think that, you know, we have plans, that we did through the area-wide process, that show a parking garage in that location, in order to make it work. It doesn't work on the lot today, so it would have to handle labor over the sidewalk. It would have to go over Colorado, and it would have to encompass the lot that's behind the court building. But, you know, we do have a plan that shows the first garage in that location. Whether it ever gets built, it is something that has been considered as part of, as part of the big plan of planning effort that we did.
Concerns me is say, if someone could tear down Juicy Lucy's and put a parking lot in the front of that lot on Seventh Street, and it's not inside of our zone. I mean, the building may be protected, it's sort of hypothetical, but, you know, Casey's Winghouse could put a parking lot in the front of that lot on Seventh Street, and it would really destroy the character of that pedestrian area.
Wait, sorry, you're mentioning the parking lot again.
We're back to requiring parking behind the primary structure.
So, I just wanted to bring that up, so that we're clarified on where that's being proposed. And, here we are. So, the parking component of it is being proposed for the downtown core. In the downtown core, 100% of all off-street surface parking shall be located behind the rear wall of the building. So, if we bring up our map, this is downtown core, which is that beige area, huge. That's, that's where... So, let me ask you on that, that's as it's written, the parking is for downtown core. The overlay district for ground floor retail, as staff has written it and proposing to you for discussion tonight, is that little dotted area around Grand. So, if you have feelings on one or the other being a different location, by all means, I will edit away.
Well, I have a variance question, does, does variances apply to either or both of these?
It would be part of our code, so, when, we would need to double-check that our variance section refers to this particular section of code, that it applies, but I believe lot standards.
I, I think this is a use standard, it's not variant, but it's zoning.
No variance.
So, the location extent process would, would be the only process by which we would not hear those...
Only the city, yeah.
And that would be for governmental or public entities only, not a private developer. I would still encourage considering that expanding that area, at least to Cooper and to Sixth Street, to some extent, yeah. I don't know about the rest of the commission.
Well, I could say, on Cooper, both sides.
So, Cooper is...
It is part of the, sort of, walkable downtown.
Absolutely.
And Seventh to Blake as well, there's a long way to, you know, the brew hub, and all of that. I mean, it seems like, it seems like that part, Sixth Street is almost a different thing, I mean, I don't disagree with you, but it seems like the Seventh and Cooper on this side of the river would be.
Cooper is still zoned commercially, but you go over to Blake, and it's transitional, isn't it? It's not even fully commercial zoning, so theoretically...
Georgia's just talking to the corner of the hotel property.
Yeah, just up Seventh.
Just to the Hotel Denver corner.
Oh, to the Hotel Denver.
Just the corner, not up Lake.
Okay.
And over, it's over the slip and hatch anyway.
But Cooper is still commercially done. I think that, that the parking standard extending to all of downtown, I think that's way too big. I feel like the GID makes more sense.
I do too.
Yep.
It seems...
Today?
I'm just trying to figure out, like, the, how the parking lots would work, you know? Yeah, it's going to be a mess, to have everything parked out of an alley and something.
Just a bunch of one-way streets.
Yeah. Seems like you got at least a lot for an access or something off of the main street. It just seems like a lot of these properties are going to be, it's going to be weird to say there's no parking, or no, no drive access, or no parking.
Well, CETA is probably trying to reduce the amount of driveways accessing Highway 82, because it's dangerous to pull in and out of them, but they would probably prefer parking the access from alleys.
But I was just talking about, like, up Colorado, if you think up Colorado, Russell's post office, you know, Bank of America, I mean, there's a whole lot of...
I mean, that map is huge.
Part of, I mean, part of the success of this in other areas, I'm thinking, big areas like Cherry Creek, and smaller areas like Durango, the reason you can do it successfully is if you have adequate public parking within two or three blocks.
Right.
Which, we are, I don't, I don't know if we have adequate park, public parking yet or not, do we? Within that area, I mean...
Depends on how long you want to watch.
Well, next to Cooper, public garage is, is pretty good, and I've never actually seen it full, but it's not really convenient to, like, uh, scene blocking key, you know?
Well, but across the street is, that's where ultimately municipal park, or, or, well, a block away, and the street parking.
So, I did bring up the zoning map, Joy, for your points. This is the M2, this central, pink, purple color, light pink, that extends past Blake. So, halfway between Blake and Bennett, between Seventh and Eighth, and then it slowly tears down, like an upside-down birthday cake, as Jen often mentions.
Get some ice cream, Joan.
Maybe it seems logical that the...
And the other one, like, so, the...
You wouldn't follow that, because that's where the zoning already...
The GID looks very close, looks very similar to that zoning district. It's orange here. So, it does go over, it touches part of Bennett, comes back down, includes a, a full city block of, or two full city blocks of Blake, and then slowly makes its way down, and ends at Eleventh Street on Grand.
I'm trying to keep it small. You know, and then you learn, and then can you maybe be bigger as you go? I mean, so, I mean, that's what you were thinking, right?
Certainly something that can be, just like any program, right? You guys are getting at design aspects that you, that you didn't like, you saw come in and you didn't like. And yes, this would be a small area, and probably your most prominent area that you were talking about. You could expand it later on, just, you know, it takes, it takes this process again, it takes public notification, because this has impact for property owners and developers of what they can and can't do. So, that's why we're also not having you decide tonight, because we haven't done that public outreach piece yet. Wanted to get a better idea, and show you these squares and configurations, before we sent it out to those people, to let them know what's changing in their zone district.
It did seem like a lot of the discussion was about Grand Avenue.
Well, part of it was Cooper, one of the, the old, the redevelopment of the old hotel triggered a lot of the discussion.
The Western.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we could wind up with another, like, where GAC is, with that big parking lot in the front.
But they didn't require parking for the Western, did they?
No.
The GID does not have parking.
So, if they don't have any off-street parking requirements, they don't have to build a parking lot at all. Their customers just have to park somewhere.
Only if you decide to provide parking, like A and B Bank, then you have to do this standard. But you, within the GID, you are not required to provide parking.
But if you do.
But if you do. I'm sorry, I, I cut off your movement.
I was just going to say that you probably, the one thing that you may consider is that, that unless there's developers that have a lender that is going to require parking, that it is likely that people will not park it, if they don't have to.
Unless it's maybe residential.
That's one thing to consider. But, but there may be uses, where especially there's lender, where there, you know, lenders have stipulations about what they want, and sometimes parking is part of that equation.
Or if it's a business where things have to get dropped off and picked up, you know, you might need a place to pull in and park, yeah. Well, like, you know, an appliance store, say one went downtown, you know?
It would be downtown.
It would, they used to be.
I still like kind of, and then I, I think keeping it small is good, but I like moving it from Eighth Street to Cooper, up Cooper, then one block up Seventh, to Blake.
For the commercial needs, or the...
For, for the, for the overlay.
For the dotted, the commercial, right.
The retail replacement part, right?
But the dotted overlay is for first-floor commercial, right?
Yeah, that's not...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
You say that area again.
So, when you go up Grand on the east side, you go to Eighth Street, you jog to Cooper, and you go all the way by the, by the lender store, so one in, and then go up to Seventh Street, and then be one in, like...
Okay, so basically... And here, I'll, I'll use this little mouse.
No, I, I, I mean, oh, yeah, I mean, well, local is already there, I mean, you know, so is GAC has their stuff already there as well. So, and they're good unless they redevelop for a block.
Right, it should include both sides of Cooper, yeah.
It should include, yeah, exactly.
Just so that I can make sure everyone's understanding of the boundary, because this could get challenging pass. Commissioner Waller, you're saying that this section should be included.
Well, plus, on, on the other side, where the liquor, where the liquor store is, and...
You want to, this extending basically between Eighth and Seventh, so this is Seventh, this is Eighth, you want to come to Blake? Do you want to go to the midpoint of the alley?
I want to go to the middle, and then, and then go behind the brew hub. So, behind the liquor store.
And capture Hotel Denver.
Do you capture Hotel Denver's parking lot?
Right, right.
Capture both sides of Blake, between Seventh and Eighth.
No, I mean the one that's right behind it.
The one that's right behind it, for a future, yeah.
Hold on.
Keep moving the map.
Alright. Okay, so we're, we're looking at Seventh and Eighth here on Grand, and you want to go over to middle, like, include my former apartment building, yes? And we go down the middle of that alley, and then we jog over to Blake, and include that commercial building?
And then go on Seventh, and connect.
And then connect.
I do think it should be included, though, that's, that's another...
What should be?
Sixth Street.
Well, I, my question on Sixth Street, right now, because I'd hate to see this just go into place and seem to be working, and then for development proposals on Sixth Street, go in under a prior set of codes before we connect. So, right now, if somebody, not to be named, were to, were to raise, you know, half the, the, the south side of Sixth Street.
Sioux Villa, and the liquor store, all that.
All that south side, what, what restrictions are there in place right now?
For retail uses?
Or anything, for redevelopment, period?
How is it not offering parking lots?
If I were to, if I were to raise that south side of Sixth Street, what can and can't I put in there?
You'll see that most of that in these, let me, um... So, that is within the downtown design standard boundary?
Okay, one second, that's, okay, downtown design, okay?
So, the area that you're talking about is within the downtown design standards, so those would apply, and also, applications for downtown core, which really gets to more additional design aspects from the zoning.
Is there anything there that would prohibit, a bank, with, like, is there anything there that would prohibit what we're, what's triggered this whole thing?
I believe the zoning in that area allows for a financial use, yes.
To me, to me, one of the catalysts for all this was to avoid that. So, for that reason, I would encourage us to consider that outline, that overlay zone over there, before something happens.
And the overlay just includes first-floor residential, right, 50%?
50%.
Non-residential.
Non-residential.
That's the retail main floor deal.
Demo, or, or 50% rebond.
I, I wouldn't get behind that.
You want to stand on my shoulder? Well, I assume it would go from, uh...
Hotel Colorado, right, to the...
Coming though.
Yes, it's a coming down.
At least, does it start at the...
What, on the south side?
Either side, or each side.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, not the north side, the south end or... So, there's our, here's our bridge, yeah. Well, my biggest concern, I can't come over here, it's curio.
Bring it down to you.
Well, the biggest fear would be here, and here.
Both sides of Sixth.
Clear to Laurel Street.
From the, from the extension of the Grand, out from the pedestrian bridge.
Only extending west.
I'm to Laurel.
And there's one place up Laurel Street we should visit.
Commissioner Waller, I believe that's referred to as spot zoning.
Call it an overlay, does that overlay?
That needs a special name.
Vitamin for getting laid.
You made a comment that, that was basically, like, considered this very seriously, it has, you know, some pretty serious implications. What would be negative implications towards adding Sixth Street to that, in your opinion?
Um, let, let's take a look at what's there now. I think what's there now works fine with, with our, with that stipulation. But if you were a developer coming in, and you wanted to put in something different commercially, and you're not going to be able to do that, think about what could possibly go there that might be not so bad in your mind. Maybe it's not a bank, maybe it's something else.
Waffle House.
The hot spray.
Well, that's tax generating. So, this is just, and, you know, my opinion aside, planners don't have opinions, at least not publicly. This is just what I want you guys to think about. If you were a developer and this was your property, how would you feel about that stipulation?
What would that...
It's going to be burdensome for the redevelopment.
You're the owner of the property, and let it go.
So, restaurant, a restaurant's allowed for that stipulation, correct? Okay, so, we're talking 50% restriction on the first floor only, correct?
First floor.
Second floor, third floor can be...
All kinds of things.
50% of the street frontage has to be tax generating.
Of the main level.
Ground floor.
Ground floor.
So, think you're building, the building footprint.
Nine to Laurel, one, and like, so summon...
To the alley. There's a new place going in.
New restaurant.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with what some...
I do think that something can happen there.
I'm worried about it.
We're going to be kicking ourselves.
And with this, with this overlay, I still think there are plenty of developer options.
Oh, yeah.
That are suitable for what the intent of Sixth Street is.
Right. I believe Jen's got a...
Throw West Lincoln? I didn't say you were West Lincoln, I said, are you going to throw one?
So, and he said you could end up with somebody who, say, something's redeveloped, and you have somebody that's built on spec, and I don't know if that would happen on Sixth Street, or if it would happen on, on, on Grand. I think there's an example from evil, where they built some buildings, and it took a long time for those ground floor leases to be... for those ground floor leases to be filled, and so you could end up with vacant because it can't be filled.
Super expensive square footage, somebody comes in and redevelops.
Yes.
It would be the most expensive retail space in town.
And, and that, and Jen mentions part of the rabbit hole that staff did go down on articles of areas struggling to fill that ground floor retail when you put in that stipulation. It's, it's another aspect to, to meet. It may be not an issue at all, but there might be something that, you know, if we have vacant spaces, that's a possibility because we're restricting what can go in there.
If you had a nonprofit, say, a museum that wasn't generating taxes for the city, and it wanted to be over there in that nice prominent location, would that not be allowed?
You'd have to take fifty percent of the ground floor and, and make it tax generating.
Or the museum could have a shop. Then it still doesn't charge taxes, right, because it's tax exempt. Okay.
In a museum bookstore or?
I don't have to deal with that part.
Yeah, yeah.
Look, that's, that's, that's a great example of, of a use, I think it's actually existing over there now, um, that wouldn't, that wouldn't meet the standard, or would have to work to get that, um, tax generating component.
We don't say how much tax generation. No, I mean, seriously, so like Carolyn, Carolyn's example. Well, if you have, if it's fifty percent of it is museum, and in that museum, and, and they sell stuff.
If they have a gift shop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fifty percent of the area, yes?
Well, is that what you're saying, and so?
Fifty percent of ground floor.
Well, then the point of sale booth has to be fifty percent, you know, because the rest of it's just stuff to look at, right? Maybe we should step nonprofits.
If fifty percent of gross floor area be uses that generate sales and are lodging revenues a different way. As I'm reading this, and Jen and Richard, um, it's, it's an area component of like, the gift shop needs to take up, or the gift shop plus a coffee shop needs to take up fifty percent of the area of the ground floor, so not just having a kiosk up at the front. That's, that's not gonna meet it in my mind.
What's the, what's the plan for Saturday?
It's not cut and dry.
Where are we at with Sixth Street?
Blanket.
For the record, can we erase that? Can I retract that? Pull it out of the record?
No, I think that's, that's, that's a good question. I mean, what is the longer vision?
So we have a, we have a master plan, the Sixth Street master plan, that has some ideas of what the lease may look like and, um, how the, the space may be redeveloped. One of the components of that master plan is the street, the streetscape, so it is currently being designed. We have thirty percent design, um, that we are working on. City Council does have an idea of how that could be funded. We are going to, we applied for a grant for, for CDI and did not get it, but we will reapply within that grant cycle, reopen for that grant. Um, so, you know, the streetscape itself, the sidewalks and bike, um, you know, parking and, and, you know, kind of changing the, the configuration of that right of way is something that we see that could happen in the relative short term. They'd be, you know, be intent for it to be built in twenty twenty-two. Um, so we, you know, that piece is, you know, in, in play, but we don't have any active applications from other folks who may want to redevelop. There is a, a new, um, restaurant that is going into the brew, or.
So, so, let me understand this from a process point of view. Let's say we, we make a suggestion that, um, that the overlay be expanded, uh, not just as Pete said, but over on Sixth Street as well. We, what happens next? I mean, in terms of noticing, feedback, and final council approval that could retract that, correct? Or is this all P and Z?
So I think the reason why we wanted to have a discussion about this is because it has been our practice when we are making these kinds of changes to a zone, to notify every, everyone within who is an affected property owner. So we anticipate, you know, like we did when we combined the zones during the rewrite of the, the, the plant, the, the whole land use plant. We, for both of the, um, there was two zoning districts that we combined, and we noticed them all for the public hearing. So that is, you know, that is our practice, so that is what we would do, and that is why we wanted to have a conversation, and have the, set where you guys wanna have, where, where you think that things are headed, and then we will notice the public and potentially have room for people, or we do not.
Right, and so, so there, to me.
They'll come back to you.
Well, that's all right. So, to me, that's one of the metrics we use. Well, if we propose this more restrictive than less restrictive, we're gonna get feedback. I imagine we'll get some pretty loud feedback from one or two entities, or not, but, but we might get a lot. That then, then based on that, we, we take action, a recommendation that then goes to council for the zoning change?
Yes.
To me, that process is worth us putting the overlay out there on Sixth Street and see what happens.
Yeah, this is not your last opportunity. We would notice, it comes back to you, you have a public hearing. There will likely be public comment, you discuss again, make your recommendation on the area, then it moves to council.
And they'll get feedback as well.
Yes, I believe so.
Does the council see it though, or it comes up, so, as we have this conversation here, come up with our recommendations? Does that go to council or?
No, no, it does not.
Does it come up and notice?
Yeah. And so they wouldn't be discussing it until it's actually in front of them, required not to.
So worst case scenario, if we put this to use, it gets passed. The likelihood is, what would happen is, um, somebody redeveloping would pretty much have commercial space down, like it would be similar to what's there already. And if there was a larger development, say a bank, it would just require, we would require them to have half of that space be another commercial space.
So if A and B came in under this.
Right.
Theoretical proposal, um, their bank would need to be only fifty percent of the ground floor and up, and then some other retail or tax generating use on that ground floor.
I don't see it as being very negative at all.
I think that helps meet some of our goals and address some concerns of, not just us, but the citizenry.
So I think I'm gonna put out the area for the overlay and then ask one more question. So I've got the expansion from Commissioner Waller, uh, which was adding, um, between Eighth and Seventh over to Cooper down the alley, including the hotel and brew pub. Then I have the addition from Commissioner Schacter, which is on Sixth Street, um, from Pine to Laurel, one, one parcel, one lot deep.
Air deep.
That area. Hey, I'm seeing head nods.
And, and you know, one, one, one question I had on that, someone brought it up on, on the parking. I mean, it seems like the parking's not that big of a deal on the, on the south side because it's, I mean, there's not many parking places there. Uh, taking many away, but on, on the, on the north side on Sixth Street, how much parking, do you lose parking in front of Summit? You lose, I mean, what are the?
If they redevelop.
Is, is, is there parking in front of?
Two villas.
I know that there used to be parking that whole way, right?
It's on the street though, it's not a parking lot.
No, I know, but, well, there's, there's, there's street parking, but plus there is one in, all right?
So the parking that's in the right of way would not street, you know, off, on street. We're talking about off street.
Right.
Um, but yeah, so my second question, which I think is leading to yours as well, is do you want the parking to match up with that area that you just mentioned of the overlay zone? Do you want that parking in the rear to be part of the overlay zone, or do you want it to be something larger?
Oh, the parking in the rear right now is overlay zone or the?
It's, from the code section that we changed, it's the downtown core, which is that very large.
That's not downtown core, that's downtown something else over there. What, what is Sixth?
Downtown core includes Sixth Street, yes.
I think what it's. GID might be more appropriate.
It includes your house. And that's where the parking would apply.
Okay, this beige, that beige area is the downtown core. So that, what staff has presented to you in the code change is the parking requirement applies to that large beige blob.
So we're staying with that.
Non-residential, right?
Non-residential.
Okay, smaller. Applicable to the GID. And that's the smaller zone, that's the.
The orange line. I could see adding Sixth Street to that as well, GID plus that Sixth Street, like, key.
That's all surface.
Oh, but there's like eight.
Um, I don't, I'm looking at it, I don't believe as written, that this is a good review. Um, I don't believe as written, it exempts residential properties. So there's a possibility that you have a residential multifamily, um, building go up. Let's say, let's just for, pick twenty units, and they're gonna put their parking lot right on Grand. Is that what you want?
We try it to density. Like. Residential, if it's eight units or more, or three.
So you, and this again, you know, in some of this, in the GID, they don't have to, like.
Do any part.
Western Hotel out of our purview, that approved and gone.
In the GID.
That's that, yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't done anything, but it's done.
Wonderful. Just syllable tagging, I can't keep all of them straight in my head.
You know, the Western Hotel is now a residential development.
Um, of eleven units.
No parking required.
No parking required, so, but if they did, and they put it right on Cooper, you know, up to the street, that's, you know, is not what you want.
That's our intent.
I don't wanna see that.
So as written, it's the large beige blob, which might be too big for you, and it applies to residential. Um, well, actually, no, let me take that back. This is in the non-residential and mixed use, um, section of code. Let me lock that one back. This happens occasionally. Um, this is seventy, forty, ninety. So in the applicability of this, let's go up to applicability, so you know exactly what this applies to. Forgot where I was in the code. Which is at the very top. Um, general applicability, development of any structure that will contain a non-residential use or a mix of non-residential and residential uses, and an addition or renovation to an existing structure that will contain non-residential use where the total gross floor area proposed, this, this is fun math we get to do, um, fifty percent or more than that of the total gross floor area of the existing structure. So this is for modifications and remodeling. Um, so this would be, this would not apply to residential. Non-residential, mixed use, so there could be some residential in a mixed use project.
It can gross on the, the parking condominium, but.
Yes, excellent example. They have, um, condominiums on the top floors.
Well.
So that type of development under this would allow street front, cave surface parking? Or would not?
If it's residential, it would.
If it's residential, so there's two sections of this code, non-residential and mixed use, and residential. Design standards, that's what we're talking about. Parking lot configuration design standards are different in the residential section of that code than what we have included here. So for as written what's proposed, parking in the rear, hundred percent, for non-residential and mixed use in the downtown core.
Why would we not apply that to residential? I mean, it's a parking lot, who cares what function it is serving if it's a shop or a, a house?
I don't think that was part of our original discussion.
Well, if you build twelve units, you might. And your alley's narrow, you know? It could happen.
I mean, doesn't generally, doesn't most of our, with most of our large multifamily apartments, don't they have to get a variance to put the parking in front of the structure?
Yeah, there's criteria for parking lot between the building and your street frontage, a limitation to thirty percent. Excellent memory, Commissioner Stock Schacter.
It seems to me that we should have something at least as restrictive, if not more so, for what we're talking about here. I mean, it seems like the consensus, we do not want, well, I'm saying, I mean, everybody can agree. We generally do not want hard surface parking on a street front in this zone, whether it be residential or mixed use, is that correct?
Well, I think this zone is, for me, is too big. I would, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind looking at the map again.
Just pull that map up then, yeah.
I think, I think it's too big, I mean, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but it's mad, it's like half of town.
I would propose the GID with the addition of the Sixth Street area as maybe the outline of the zone that this would apply to, the parking, the parking.
When you say hard surface, that means you are paving a parking lot that would then apply to like, somebody who has just a little gravel parking space, like has a three unit.
Like a driveway that goes through to the alley.
I mean, that's my concern is if we apply this to residential, you have those little three complexes, those random little.
The stretch is strange.
Or whatever, and they have little off-street parking right in front of their units.
We don't wanna ban that.
Can you pull the map up again?
I certainly can.
Even my house, it's got a driveway off the street.
Oh, boy.
And the parking's technically in front of my house.
They buy, they muddy the walk.
As is everybody's in downtown.
Yeah.
I don't believe that you guys are proposing this for residential, or are you now?
I think it would be tied to density, I think that's why I said, yeah, we have it tied to, if it is like a multifamily.
Right, like a threeplex or bigger or something.
I think I'm gonna recommend at this point on the residential side that staff take a closer look at that section of code to see what's truly there. I think we're getting, my fault entirely, I think we're getting a little muddied on this, and I would feel much more comfortable if I had some time to sit down, look at what's there, and then propose something when this comes back, um, as, as something. Jen, Richard, feelings on that?
My hearing in it too is shrink the area.
I'm definitely hearing shrink the area. I heard GID and the Sixth Street area component of overlay.
That's a good start.
I think so, the orange line.
And I would be almost more conservative, I'm a conservative director or whatever. I, I almost kinda like just doing the overlay, new overlay, we decided not to with the GID. I mean, it sounds like we're still figuring parking out, you know, what's gonna happen with the new parking structure, and, you know, so is that okay for the city to do that, but not for private, you know? You're gonna, how does that play out and, um?
Well, we have expanded the overlay area, that helps, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm kinda tossing that out.
Yeah.
It might be less confusing than having all these.
As an alternative, so it, so it, so it's the overlay with the little.
Almost no residential.
Boots put down at the bottom on Seventh Street and then Sixth Street.
Starting to look like a Tetris game.
Yes.
So you're saying, Commissioner Waller, you're proposing the parking component to be within the overlay district itself?
The expanded.
The ground level retail and parking in the back seem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For non-residential and mixed use.
Yes.
Would, would that be included in the?
That would include, as an.
By, by the last, because it's through the last block going south.
It won't include the hostel if they tear that down.
No, it won't. But nobody goes there for retail anyway. Nobody goes that far south.
So like that two bill of curio, when they go redevelop someday, and they gotta have a lot of parking in the back? Can they have a driveway through there?
Yeah, we, we have design standards for access to parking lot, it, it does.
There is a lot back there.
Yeah, with access, right, yeah.
Yes, um, so engineering standards for access and circulation, we also have some in seventy, um, for how that looks. So definitely a good area to keep an eye on, uh, because sometimes creating a lot that has the drive aisle width required to go around back might be challenging, um, site design wise.
From a dollar point of view, they're all, the pool is gonna seek all parking access from over here in, they're not gonna wanna put driveways through to use that square footage.
I don't want them to have it.
So do you have your marching orders?
I believe I do.
Anything else?
As, as described with the areas, attaching the parking to the overlay zone, and the overlay zone as described with the little Tetris upside down L on the south side, and then the section of Sixth Street from Pine to Laurel on the north.
And then you're gonna look into the. And then you're gonna look into the residential.
Yeah. Yes.
Or not.
All right.
Later.
So you don't need any other action? This was just discussion?
No, no action tonight. So the staff is going to take these components and obviously, um, delineate who we need to notice, um, for the pub, for the next public hearing that would come before you to, um, let the public that will be impacted by this have, um, time before you to chat.
Right. Thank you, Hannah.
You are welcome. Thank you guys for doing the hard work.
Other comments?
Wait, what, what?
What, what?
Were we supposed to look at that like door inset and the kick plate thing? Is that today? Uh, was I looking at the wrong design standards or something?
Those are part, yes.
Yes, we were.
We were having a zone we were gonna apply those things to also.
All of these are gonna come before you. Those, we did some small changes from your guys' design standards, so let's go back to those.
All right, you guys thought you were out of here.
Far too thorough.
Well, I read the thing.
Um, I'm just cruising through.
With yellow, right?
Yes, I left it with yellow, so they're easy. Um, under building articulation techniques, um, small little edit there from where to when. And then to minimize apparent mass, new buildings shall be divided into bays through projections and or recesses. Um, what we added here, projections and or recesses shall include a column and lintel feature.
Maybe I'll there.
The header across the top.
It's the top piece.
It's like a beam.
Um, we deleted item four here that said, buildings shall have a clearly articulated architectural distinction between the street level and upper floors expressed through detailing, changes in material and fenestration. One or more belt courses shall be used to help distinguish between floors. We included this in other, the other highlighted sections, so belt courses actually occur, um, here in E. So we've got floor distinctions. We did add a minimum four inch depth for a belt course. And if we would like to see what a belt course is, I can certainly Google and bring up an image. But basically that distinction, distinction between floors, um, we looked at some of the projects that have came, come in and the distinction was, the depth was not significant enough to really call it out.
Tacked on like this piece of wood around here.
So four inch depth then makes it a little bit more noticeable.
No vertical dimension.
Not a vertical dimension, no.
But then the main floor.
No, wait, the.
Oh, the belt itself, right, yep. So it could be a quarter inch piece of plate still.
You would know better than I.
Not likely. I wouldn't want to have to flash it.
Um, I believe that, oh, we've got, so kick plate. Um, this is new commercial storefront buildings shall incorporate the following character defining elements, um, of which there are four listed here and under the third one, the kick plate down beneath the display window, sometimes called a bulkhead panel, kick plates shall measure between eighteen to twenty-four inches tall. So that's defining their, their size, where it was not defined before, it just said kick plate.
If, if someone had a really steeply sloping lot and they built a, a thing, it, it could slope more than six inches across their lot and if they wanted the lines to run, would they have to come to us for a variance?
This would fall under a design aspect, so yes.
Okay. Where did the eighteen come from? Just other municipalities? Jen?
I feel like that it was something that you, not you in particular, but you.
You, you.
Brought up during the discussion of, of the, I mean, I think there was an example that we used from like California, maybe that and it was very specific. So that is, I think, borrowed from another jurisdiction.
Okay, but there, there could be relief for that if it was, uh, prohibitive. I mean, I get it, you wanna keep the.
If you guys change the de, design variance, um, criteria to be a little bit more flexible than the straight variance aspect. So it would come in under that.
Okay, great.
Uh, I believe that is it. Yes.
I liked your pictures.
Thank you.
Yeah, the pictures were great.
I was pointing out, it was. I was thinking it was good. I'll take it.
Um, so these, again, this is a component that will come back to you. Uh, we're not taking action on these aspects, but everyone's comfortable with these. No changes to the small design aspects. I'm not seeing, seeing none. Okay, so those will, if you re-decide later, those will come back to you at the next public hearing, uh, for discussion as well.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
I'm fortunate. Commissioner comments? We'll start over with Mr. Waller. Jen?
Very nice.
Carolyn?
Well, I live near the A and B bank going up and I thought they had a temporary guardrail up there on the roof, but it looks like it's their mechanical enclosure and their equipment's sticking way above it and I just don't know, um, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm being a tattletale and who watches that sort of thing? Is it code enforcement or does it, you guys, so before they get a permit?
With mechanical equipment on a roof?
Yeah.
And you're concerned with the height?
Uh, well, they're, it's, it's not screened, I see it.
We definitely do have provisions in our code for screening mechanical equipment that's on a roof.
Right, they put screening up, but the mechanical equipment exceeds the height of the screening and.
Temporary.
How about we, um, have a chat offline with staff about that?
Yeah, or maybe just give it a drive-by and see what you guys think. I just noticed it and was like, well, now that we're talking about all these design standards, um, and I wasn't in on, on that discussion, I had to abstain, so I just thought I would, um, bring that one up, but yes.
Okay, that'll be off.
Yep, if you wanna send me an email.
Okay, we can do that. Um, non-residential, uh, nope, that, that's all I got. Thank you for all your work on putting together these code amendment changes.
George?
Nothing here.
Nothing here, Director?
I think, uh, you'll, we'll be reaching out soon, um, Trent will be reaching out about the conference.
The plan, so I think that it's likely to, we're gonna have a kickoff meeting next week, I think it is, or the week after, the, the week after.
That date, yeah, we got a bunch of dates thrown out there and then change.
They were pulled.
Okay.
Now we have a date.
Okay, so yes, I don't know exactly. I think it, it might be next week. Time doesn't mean the same thing since the pandemic. Um, so we will be, uh, kicking that process off and we will be, um, you know, starting to have some of those conversations. I think that people are starting to be interested in, you know, hey, how's the complaint gonna affect this? So, I mean, we have people's attention, so that will be, uh, a good process. And then, um, I think if you're interested in the South Canyon, uh, the outreach effort, there's a meeting Thursday night. And that's all for me.
There is a survey to fill out on the South Canyon too.
Yeah, that was great.
We want to, yeah.
Uh, on the city website.
You go to the city site and get it.
Not getting texts.
Huh?
Not getting texts on that one.
I got an email about it.
Yeah. All right.
So for me, um, for November, we do have a planning application, a residential, um, twenty unit planning application coming before you guys. So we will have a meeting November sixteen. Thank you very much. Um, we possibly, as Jen mentioned, might bring back the, um, code changes that were not decided on tonight. That will either be probably November or December. We'll see how that pans out with our public noticing and decisions. Um, and then we also have applications that are headed for December, so, um, let me know if you are not going to be around for those November and December meetings.
So we're looking for the meeting times, or the if, because of the holidays?
Yeah.
Yes, we move it up for Thanksgiving, so November sixteenth is the November meeting and December will be, uh, fourteenth.
Do we have, do we have a firm date for that kickoff on planning and zoning? And my luck.
The comp plan?
Jen is searching.
Need for the comp plan, yeah.
There's no work sessions though in November, December, or do we?
Um, good question. I think I wanna confirm with Trent that he doesn't need work session. Given the short, shorter timeline, it's gotta be a little challenging to squeeze those in. Um, so I think once Jen finds the comp plan kickoff meeting, um, don't wanna overload your holiday season, yeah.
Oh, wait, is it, is it the first at eleven?
It isn't it? It is, and it looks like it, it's not, it's, it's more of like the steering committee folks and, um, and staff, so. More technical committee. I don't think we have a date set for a kickoff with P and Z yet.
But there is an initial meeting, the first at ten thirty.
Yes, so that looks like it, it, it looks like it's mostly superintendent, the department head. Uh, most of the major.
I'm at Action Plan, I, I haven't read that yet. Was that just FYI right now?
Yeah, I think it's FYI to think about with the comp plan.
Together to put in the comp plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, eight, I think.
Yeah, oh, eight.
I just provided it because it was a request.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you did not get the full list, but I did send Commissioner Waller all of.
I got all the links.
It was a thing.
Talk to Commissioner Waller, all right.
You know I'll read them.
I think we're good then.
Yeah.